I got the short chair.
You got the short chair?
Yes.
They're all shorts.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 13, 2007, meeting of the Salina City Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
Commissioner Vanier.
I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Fledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda today is the Citizens Forum, a time set aside for any citizen who would like to address the commission on an item that is not on the regularly scheduled agenda. And if you could just give us your name and address.
Janie Stein, currently 1015 Scott Avenue, Salina, Kansas. I have a copy of a letter that I gave to you folks a month ago that I'd like to read to everyone here and have this entered into the minutes, a resolution that I'm requesting that you adopt here. Dear City Commissioner, according to the Nuremberg Principles derived from the International Law Commission and affirmed and adopted by the United Nations in 1950, of which the United States was and is a member nation, citizens in this country are culpable of war crimes committed by their government. In light of this knowledge, in good conscience as a taxpayer whose government's actions are done in my name, I am obliged to ask you to adopt articles of impeachment against United States President George W. Bush and Vice President Richard B. Cheney. There is ample evidence available to warrant investigation into war crimes and treason of this current administration. At least eighty-five towns and cities throughout the United States have adopted these resolutions, and it is in the interest of citizens of Salina, Kansas, to be on record as submitting this request that our city adopt these resolutions and enter this resolution into the congressional record. Please read this resolution into the minutes of this meeting so that my husband and I and other citizens can have written proof that we have tried to stop war crimes from being committed in our name. Resolution to impeach President George W. Bush and Vice President Richard B. Cheney. Whereas George W. Bush and Richard B. Cheney conspired with others to defraud the United States of America by intentionally misleading Congress and the public regarding the threat from Iraq in order to justify a war in violation of Title 18, United States Code, Section 371; and whereas George W. Bush has admitted to ordering the National Security Agency to conduct electronic surveillance of American citizens, civilians, without seeking warrants from the Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Court of Review duly constituted by Congress in 1978 in violation of Title 50, United States Code, Section 1805; and whereas George W. Bush and Richard B. Cheney conspired to commit the torture of prisoners in violation of the Federal Torture Act, Title 18, United States Code, Section 113(c), the U.N. Torture Convention and the Geneva Convention, which under Article 6 of the Constitution are part of the supreme law of the land; and whereas George W. Bush and Richard B. Cheney acted to strip American citizens of their constitutional rights by ordering indefinite detention without access to legal counsel, without charge, and without the opportunity to appear before a civil judicial officer to challenge the detention based solely on the discretionary designation by the president of a U.S. citizen as an enemy combatant, all in subversion of law; and whereas in all of this, George W. Bush and Richard B. Cheney have acted in a manner contrary to their trust as president and vice president, subversive of constitutional government to the great prejudice of the cause of law and justice and to the manifest injury of the people of Salina, Kansas, and of the United States of America; and whereas petitions from the country at large may be presented by the Speaker of the House according to Clause 3 of House Rule 12, be it resolved that George W. Bush and Richard B. Cheney by such conduct warrant impeachment and trial and removal from office and disqualification to hold and enjoy any office of honor, trust, or profit under the United States. Be it resolved further by the City of Salina, Kansas, that our senators and representatives in the United States Congress be, and they are hereby, requested to cause to be instituted in the Congress of the United States proper proceedings for the investigations of the activities of the George W. Bush and Richard B. Cheney, to the end that they may be impeached and removed from such office. Be it resolved further that the clerk of the City of Salina, Kansas be and is hereby instructed to certify to the Speaker of the House of Representatives, under the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, a copy of this resolution and its adoption by the City of Salina, Kansas, as a petition, and request that this petition be delivered to the office of the clerk and entered in the United States Congressional Journal. The copy shall be marked with the word "Petition" at the top of the document and contain the original authorizing signature of the City Clerk of Salina, Kansas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janie. That resolution is under advisement and will be entered into the minutes. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward for the Citizens Forum? Seeing none, we will continue on with the wards and proclamations. There are none today, so that brings us to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the 2008 Budget, Sub-Item 5.1a, Second Reading Ordinance Number 07-10403, attesting to the possible increase in taxes levied for budget year 2008 necessary to finance public services. Item 5.1b, Second Reading Ordinance Number 07-10404, adopting the 2008 budget. Sub-Item 5.1c, Resolution Number 07-6421, providing for the appropriation by fund of the budget for the City of Salina for the year beginning January 1, 2008. Sub-Item 5.1d, Resolution Number 07-6422, establishing various fees for services in the City of Salina. Sub-Item 5.1e, Resolution Number 07-6423, adopting the position, classification, and salary schedule for city employees. Sub-Item 5.1f, Approval of the 2008 Capital Improvement Plan.
Mr. Franz?
Thank you. According to state statute, a public hearing is required to be held on the proposed budget on or before August 15. As required by statute, the notice of hearing was published on August 3 in the Salina Journal, providing the required ten days' notice. I've attached a notice, a copy of the notice in your packet. As directed, we did publish that with a tax, proposed tax levy of 25 and 1/2 mils. And when we get down to the action portion of these items, we will need a specific action to reduce it from that level since that is what is published, if that's what you wish to do. Just as a, I guess, a side note, as an addition, this year we did publish an early bird notice back in June 10 and June 13 inviting the public to participate in the budget process. We did receive some response from that notice in the form of requests for human services program funding, which was one of the purposes of doing so. Total expenditures in this budget excluding interfund transactions and reserves totaled $67,432,072 for 2008. Comparable amount last year was $61,765,490. The increases are due to nonroutine capital items, utility projects, landfill compactor, mobile data terminals for the Public Safety Department, some services and supplies, and pay plan implementation and related benefits. Today, the City Commission should open the public hearing to take comments regarding the proposed 2008 budget. This is a time set aside formally for citizens to make known their opinions and suggestions regarding the 2008 budget. The budget is published, contemplates a total city mill levy of 25.5 mils compared to the current levy of 23.789 mils. Total taxes levied will change from $8,990,0270 to $9,793,393, excluding delinquency considerations. Total taxes levied at the current levy rate would be $9,136,275. Published increases intended to provide an offset to losses resulting from the machinery and equipment exemption, commitment to continue funding community access, as well as general increases in program expenses. Bulk of the tax changes in the general fund. With the published tax change, the general fund budget will still show a budgeted deficit of about $1.3 million in a corresponding balance decline. However, year-end fund balances are still projected within goal levels. City Commission may select a levy amount up to but not exceeding the published number of $9,793,393. The effect of the selected levels of those changes is shown in the table, and it says below, but I provided you with a substitute table that is, has a corrected calculation on it. The difference is in the amount on the $100,000 residence column. Those amounts did change, as well as the changes to that column. The amount necessary to keep pace with inflationary trends alone would fall between 24 and 24 and 1/2 mils. As a matter of perspective, total anticipated expenditures for funds which have some reliance on the property tax is $33,373,373,160. So the $9.7 million is just a little bit less than a third of those funds. Modest rate increases have also been proposed for city user fees as follows: emergency medical services, 5%, water rates, 5%, sewer rates, 5%, sanitation fees, 4%. Solid waste fees will increase by a dollar per ton, which is 3.6%. Consideration of golf course fees, as we normally do, is deferred until later in the year. Further detail, Commissioner Public has referred to the issues and options, as well as the budget transmittal letter and other material discussed at the several study sessions leading up to this hearing. After closing the public hearing, the City Commission should consider the actions necessary to adopt and implement the 2008 budget. Policy action items have been prepared in accordance with City Commission's direction and set forth the spending and service plans of the City of Salina for our budget year Following the staff reports, City Commission should take separate action on each of the budget-related items, either by adoption as presented or after any amendments that the Commission deems appropriate. The items to be considered are: Item A is Second Reading of Ordinance Number 07-10403, attesting to the possible increase in taxes levied for budget year 2008. This ordinance was considered at first reading on August 3. No comments, to my knowledge, have been received on, after that first reading, ordinance as required by state statute under the circumstances in which we find ourselves. After that item, then, you should discuss and decide as to the mill levy amount that you would like to place an effect for this budget, and that can be done by motion at that time. And then proceed on to what we have described as Item B, Second Reading of Ordinance 07-10404, adopting the 2008 budget. Resolution 07-6421, providing for appropriation by fund of the budget. Then Resolution 07-6422, establishing various fees, and we've already discussed those rate And then Resolution 07-6423, adopting the position, classification, and salary schedule. And then finally, consider and approve the 2008 Capital Improvement Program, and that can be, again, be done by motion. There will be one remaining action relating to the annual budget process, and that's the consent to the airport authority mill levy. That action is scheduled for consideration at the August 20 meeting. Under the fiscal note, the budget actions provide the fiscal authority and resources for the implementation of the city program of work. And then the recommended actions are simply adopting those legislative documents in order, with, of course, the modification to establish the mill levy by motion after Sub-Item A. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Okay. We need to officially open the hearing, and if there's any questions of Mr. Franz at this time, I'm sure he would entertain them. Thank you. We've been hashing over this budget document for the past month or so, and want to give the public an additional opportunity to weigh in on any of the items before us.
I'm Ernest Cole, 153 South Front, here in Salina. I am here to object, number one, to the increase in the mill levies. Number two, to the percentage of increases in Salina city budget. Do you people realize that people on fixed incomes have been restricted to less than a 3% increase per year for the last several years, while the City of Salina has increased its budget approximately 6% per year? And do you realize where that puts those on fixed incomes on their abilities to meet their needs? The mill levy increase, especially, I am against. Our legislators about two years ago did a study, the Audit Committee did a study that showed that the people in the state of Kansas, the citizens, on the average, were paying, those earning over $200,000 a year were paying about 7% of their income in taxes. Those working making less than $30,000 a year are paying an average of 52% of their income in taxes. This nonsense has got to stop. You're going to have to start learning how to control spending and quit trying to continually increase the burden on the people of this community. This mill levy increase is ridiculous in the fact that the legislature, when they removed the business machinery from the tax roll, also are going to make up 90% of that for this year. We know that. And each year will cut down 80%. The increase in the valuations in this community more than make up for the loss. And I am just getting sick and tired of it. And I'll tell you, come next election, we may make a difference.
My name is Shirley Cole. I live at 153 South Front. I hate to see Salina losing people, moving to all the outlying counties in other parts of our state. Every day, there are people who are giving up their homes because they cannot afford to pay the tax that they are required to take. Many of them are young people who have children, who do not have the means, even though both parents are working, some of them are working two and three jobs just to keep their heads above water. As a taxpayer and a rent provider, a lot of people don't realize that if the taxes are raised on these properties, we, in good conscience, could raise the rent. We have people who we have had, one for about eight years, who are also on fixed income, and we are really reluctant to raise those people's rent. Whether or not it has anything to do with us being Christians, or soft touches, or whatever, we have not thus far. And we don't want to have to see these people move. Both have been fairly good renters, and they pay their rent on time, keep the property fairly clean, and we do appreciate that. But in all honesty, I don't think that we need any more of a raise in taxes. Our house we're presently living in was built in 1905. We're almost afraid to make any improvements because any time we do, we get our taxes raised. We know a lot of people who have moved out of Salina that we're still in contact with, and they love Salina, but it's getting to the point where they can't afford to live here. And with that, I'll say, I hope you reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the budget or proposed mill levy?
I'm Sidney Schultz, 1218 East Ellsworth, Salina, Kansas. I'm definitely against any tax increases. The condition of our whole nation has got a problem of overspending, wasting our taxpayers' money on things that we don't really need. I heard, or I read in the Salina Journal that three of our commissioners said, "Well, we need to keep up with the outlying communities." No, we don't have to keep up with the Joneses. You know, that's peer pressure. That's adolescent stuff. You people are older than that. You need to look at these things of getting the taxes reduced, not raise them. You put us into this position with all these silly expenditures that we put in that we don't need. Our streets are still in bad shape. I see they're repairing some of them. But where are you going, when are you going to start spending the money keeping up what we have? Look what we've done to our swimming pool. Look at the quandary we're in over that. You know, it's ridiculous. The county commission the same way. Don't want to take care of anything. Make it look as bad as we can, and we can get a new one. That's not good management, people. That's just damn poor management. And the people are tired of it. Now, we need more people up here talking about this, but they won't, they won't show up down here, so I'm going to do the talking for them. You folks, you need to look at reducing the expenses, not making more. Thank you.
Additional public comments on the proposed 2008 budget or mill levy? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission, and we have a series of actions that we need to take to pass and implement the budget. Should I let you read 5.1a or?
Can I reread them?
No, I guess I can do that. The first action is, we passed on first reading last week, Ordinance 07-H10403, attesting to the possible increase in taxes levied for budget year 2008 necessary to finance public services. I'll entertain a motion on that on second reading. Mr. Franz, if I understand correct, this would, we would, this would say that we would possibly increase over last year, and then after that, we would discuss exactly?
That's correct. And the prescribed statutory procedure for considering a tax increase as it's defined by the state of Kansas requires the adoption of this ordinance.
Okay.
So this doesn't actually increase the taxes, it just says it may happen?
Yes.
Okay. So I would move that we adopt Ordinance Number 07-10403 on second reading with the correction that it's talking about in Section 2, it's year 2007, correct? Instead of 2008?
No, 2008.
Says that the amount, we necessary to use property tax revenue is an amount which exceeds the revenues expended in the budget year 2008, while we haven't expended.
Sorry, I was reading the agenda. Agenda reads correctly.
Okay. But anyway, move the adoption of that ordinance on second reading, because there is been...
Motion is to approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 07-H10404, I'm sorry, 10403, attesting to the possible increase in taxes levied for budget year 2008 necessary to finance public services. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Mayor Jelka?
Aye.
Now, we will need to have some discussion as to exactly where to set the mill levy, which is in effect the upper limit.
It's my understanding, even if the mill levy were raised to 25.5, as we discussed last time, there would be a deficit for the year. And if we rolled back to some, any other level, it just makes the deficit that much greater. But, so the question is still, I guess, for Mr. Franz and Mr. Gage, can we make a budget if we roll back to the 24-mil limit?
I was glad to come on up, but I'll start off. Commissioners, when we initially submitted the budget, we did submit pretty well the same budget you have in front of you without the recommendation for a tax increase, with the thought that, though, that you would want to discuss that, possibly debate that, and then make a decision on that later. So we did go into this with the, with the assumption that there may not, there may not be a mill levy increase. I think that Rod would agree that we can make that work in '08. What we're really looking, will be looking at is the long-term future, and it's, it's just a question of where you want to be, and it's a question of weighing. You can't look at one side of the equation. You have to look at, what does the community expect on the service side? If they're okay with five-minute response times instead of four-minute for emergency services, then, you know, we can do some things. If we don't need to put as much money into street maintenance, we can do some other things. If we don't need the quality of people that we'd like to have to make sure that, because we're a people-oriented organization, and if we don't care to have the quality that we really need to have to do the best job that we can do, then we can also do some things. And so, when you look at this, there's anticipation here that, an expectation, I should say, excuse me, that what we, what we do today, we want to do it better. Now, we haven't recommended adding any particular programs in this budget. We're status quo with the programs, but we're, part of what we're doing is, we're looking at ourselves to say, how can we do what we do better, particularly the core things, the core services that people expect us to provide every day. Certainly, we know we had a pay plan this year, that's the budget impact. We knew that going in, and we knew it was going to be a big swallow as well. We felt that in the long term, that was in the best interest of our organization, and we have a pretty aggressive capital improvement plan in here as well. I don't know that it necessarily meets the expectations of the public, but relatively speaking, it's pretty aggressive. So a lot of it is, is it's for you as a commission to look at and say, where do you want to be? And I think there's room in here. I don't, I'm not, definitely not saying that it's an all-or-nothing deal here. There's definitely room for discretionary discussion here, and, but it's about the long term. We do show the fund balance and the general fund coming down a little bit. Now, annually, we do typically show that in the budget, and we always know there's so much money that's left on the table because our department heads do a pretty good job with their operating budgets. So we always expect to see some left on the table. Where we'll be at this year is a little, this is a bit of a transition year, so we're not quite sure if it'll be where it has been in the past few years, so we want to be cautious there. But can we make the budget work? Yeah, I think we can make the budget work, but we, our focus is probably further out than in simply 2008. I'll go ahead and defer to Rod and see if he has?
Yeah, I would, I would add that Mr. Gage is correct in that the way we budget, normally, we find ourselves at the end of the year with a little bit left on the table, as it were. This year, I think, we're, we're probably pushing that limit harder than, than we ever have before. have before. And, and the issue is not so much can we live through 2008, it's what, what do we do in 2009? Because if we end up with a significant deficit in 2008, then in 2009, there's likely to be a larger deficit that we have to make up in less time. So it, it really, you know, it, as Mr. Gage says, it's really more of a long-term question than of an immediate, you know, critical issue. But it will turn into that within a year or two.
Doesn't like me today. If you recall, when we were thinking about raising the sales tax, the sales tax issue several years ago, a lot of citizens were told that if you vote in favor for this, the mill levy won't go up. What was the long-term effect of that? What was the, for how many years were they going to be promised that they weren't, that the mill levy wasn't going to go up if they voted for the sales tax? Was there even any kind of a projection there?
I believe that the way the, the statement was phrased was that it would be used for tax, for property tax stabilization. And that was largely intended to address the, our bond and interest fund, and in fact, we are pulling about a half a million dollars a year from that sales tax fund and the bond and interest in order to keep that mill levy from going up. If we had not done so, then we would be, we would be loving a half a million dollars more than we are now. And that was largely due to some of the, some of the, well, the North Ohio overpass project.
I want to throw, just put a comment on the table. As I've said in the past weeks, when we've been discussing these, there were some actions in Topeka that directly adversely affected us the past year, one being the passage of the business, taking off the business equipment and new machinery tax, property tax, which is going to take approximately $140,000 away from us this year. And then also, the changes in franchise law took away another $140,000 from access TV, which we are making up, at least for this year, and hopefully, we can transition them to something else. But one of the effects of doing that is we can keep meetings like this on the air for our citizens, and keeping, putting those two numbers together is how I've come up with the 24.5 suggestion that I made in previous meetings.
I don't know if I have another comment. I, I did look back at some of the basic principles of, of property tax, which I dislike because it seems to be the most inconsistently run. In theory, you should never have to change the levy amount if you want to keep same services because the appraisals automatically go up if you have a thorough county appraiser, as we seem to do, to have. And that, that should keep property tax equal with the general flow of inflation. And then I've, I've, I'm a sensitive guy. Lots of people have called me on this, probably more than on anything else, and some of them have been really mean about it. But there is that shred of, of perception that the sales tax increase the last time around, with the election, was promoted fairly heavily as a way to stabilize the property tax. And so I'm inclined to, to want to stick with the 24 or the mayor's 24.5, the slight increase this time around, and we need to start looking at things. It troubles me a little bit that we've increased things like our utility franchise fees, actually 66% in the last four years. We've increased all our chargeable fees, and we're preparing to do that again on all the, the funds that are essentially self-supporting, to keep them in line with inflation. And we haven't really done anything that saved anybody any money, that I'm aware of. So this won't really save any money, even if we roll it back, but it would reduce the, it would reduce the level of the increase.
24 and a half, a compromise that the majority of us up here could live with?
I had citizens tell me that the flooding has really, they're still trying to pay for those things. FEMA offered some assistance, but of course, they're not going to rebuild everything 100%. Fuel is going up, makes everything go up, groceries, you name it. They agreed with me that a tench, which is what I think we're doing at 24, 24 and a half, is a gradual place to start. You can't, you know, fix it overnight. They were a little bit, they were a little bit surprised. I know we've been talking about it, and I guess we need to let the public know that we're going to be doing this in the future, you know, expect it to go up next year, a mill, if things aren't operating as smoothly, or the money isn't coming in like we thought, or the budgeting. But with that in mind, I, I think the few people that I, the several people that did talk to me about not increasing it, by the time I gave them my perspective about a gradual increase, and then, of course, we've got the sales tax issue to worry about here in a few years. Evaluations still are going up, and they're a little bit miffed by that. They tried to appeal it, to no appeal. So the only way that I can help them is by increasing it gradually to make up for the machinery and equipment exemption, and also the access TV, but not a huge amount, so that they don't feel like. It's great when you put it on a little chart like this and in the newspaper. I believe the editorial had it down to an additional $17 a month is what it was going to cost you. $17 a month on top of what you're already spending, though, is how I believe I understand. It ends up being $39, $39 a year, I believe, is how it was in the, in the paper. So, yeah, when you break it down like that to a nickel a day, it does sound great, a nickel a day, but you also have to buy groceries and gas and everything else, so I am still going to stay where I was on this all along at no more than 25. So 24 to 24 and a half would be where, I would be very happy with that, to do that to our citizens.
Well, I was always for 25 and a half. I appreciate Mr. Cole's comments, certainly have a relation to my own on fixed incomes, and, and can understand your perspective on this. My initial comment at 25 and a half was, let's publish this number, and if we need to roll it back, we can, but let's, let's set the bar to where we think it needs to be, if, if we indeed decide it needs to be that high. I think the community has to grow. I think it has to, to move forward. I believe it was our chamber president who said, "Communities, if they're not moving forward, they're moving backwards. There's no status quo." And I think I'm of that belief. I think in the future, the expectation should be set that this is a community that is going to move forward and grow. At this time, to offset some of the negative things that have happened to our budget situation, I would be okay with an increase to 24 and a half as well.
You want to make that a, a motion? Who wants to be else? Well, okay, one of us needs to.
Go ahead, Abner.
Let's see, this is in the second reading of.
It's not specifically on the agenda, it's something that we have to deal with.
Is it a separate item completely?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, I would move that we adopt a budget based on an increase of the mill levy to no greater than 24.5 mills.
Motion is to proceed with next year's budget with a mill levy not to exceed 24.5 mills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. We will now need option, action on the 2008 budget itself. We've been discussing this, I'd say, the last month, and I, if there's any specific comment on a particular budget item, I would entertain it. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. 5.1B.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the second reading ordinance number 07-10404, adopting the 2008 budget.
Second. The motion is to adopt on second reading ordinance 07-10404, adopting the 2008 budget. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Pernie?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
The next item appropriates by fund budget items for 2008. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'd move that resolution number 07-6421 appropriating the 2008 budget for, by fund for the city of Salina for the year January 1, 2008, be adopted.
Second.
Motion is to adopt ordinance resolution 07-6421, providing for the appropriation by fund of the budget for the city of Salina for the year beginning January 1 of 2008. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. Next item concerns the fees for services. Entertain a motion?
See, the biggest increase in this is the solid waste, a dollar a ton. Most of the others are right at 5%. There's no change in the swimming pool fee, is there? No. I didn't think so. Okay. So it's a bargain. It's still a bargain. Go ahead.
You don't want to open it back up for comments on the swimming pool fee, do you? No.
Oh, you can if you like. I don't know. Well, you can discuss the, the motion after it's made. So I'd move that resolution number 07-6422, establishing various fees for services in the city of Salina, Kansas, be approved as presented today.
Second. Motion is to approve resolution 07-6422, establishing various fees for services in the city of Salina. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. Next resolution would adopt the new, excuse me, I'm sorry. Next item deals with the position classification and salary schedule.
Let's see, that thing's been discussed at great length, and it'll be interesting to see how it actually works out. I move that resolution number 07-6423, adopting the position classification and salary schedule for city employees, be approved.
Second.
Motion is to adopt resolution 07-6423, adopting the position classification and salary schedule for city employees. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. And lastly, we need action on the 2008 capital improvement plan. Is there any additional questions on that before we entertain a motion?
I have one comment, proposal that I, I think I made in a study session, but I didn't get much reaction. I think maybe everybody thought I was kidding. But since this is the formal meeting, I am not kidding. And that is the South Ninth Street improvements. Five and a half billion dollars projected to, to phase four, which begins where phase three ends. How many people in this room know where phase three ends and could tell us from memory?
Walmart.
That is incorrect, sir. You are wrong. I'm sorry to say, Mr. Cole. At any rate, South Ninth Street is not in horrible shape in this group, or this next phase. We are not getting any state aid on it. I have this, for a project that big, it ought to be eligible for some form of state aid within the next couple of years. So my theory would be that we reduce that project to the design phase at this point, keep it in the hopper, apply for every possible kind of state aid, and in the meantime, substitute a swimming pool facility not to exceed $5 million. And in so doing, avoid having to take a swimming pool by itself up for a separate sales tax. Now, I know that in the long run, if the aid doesn't come up, and if we do, if Ninth Street eventually will need to be improved, then we may have to take Ninth Street out for additional sales taxes. But it seems, to me at least, that community priorities would, would probably support that right now, and that theoretically, at least we could fast-track a swimming pool. The report should be due from the Expo Center Park people by September, if, if that has a site recommendation in it. We could take that, consider it, and decide on a site by October, find a swimming pool consultant by October that will work to a budget instead of trying to build a budget to the most grandiose plan they can come up with, and have plans ready to go out next summer. We go ahead and use the present pool as best we can, keeping it as clean as possible for one more season, and you should be able to have a pool by the 2009 season. Intriguing idea. Two questions. One, is there, do we not have a policy that any so-called quality-of-life project where a million dollars needs to be submitted to voters?
I may defer this to the finance director, but it's my understanding that we wouldn't submit the transportation projects, they fall under an exemption, but for recreational project, we would still have to do that.
Yeah, that's correct. The South Ninth Project falls under what's called a major trafficways provision, which allows us to issue bonds to rebuild for a facility like a swimming pool or a public building or something like that. That would have, the bond issue would have to go before the voters for approval.
Is Commissioner Pernie's idea that there's some possible state or federal aid floating around out there somewhere, or will that have any merit, or?
No, Commissioners, we, what we do is, we have projects in a long-term plan that we submit quite often. You may recall that we, the last significant-sized project was a total reconstruction of East Magnolia from Ohio out east, basically to the city limits, and we had to wait on that one. We had another project come in that was approved, that one was deferred. That's really the next one in line. That would widen that and take care of future capacity issues we have out there. We did do a, a mill and overlay for that particular project, by some years until we could get that back in the plan. So, a lot of that, in order to make the decision you're making today, you're probably going to have to take the Magnolia project and kick it out further. That's, that's a pretty short timeframe to make that decision. And if you do that, there's no guarantees that South Ninth could fall in in two to three years, somewhere in there, maybe out further still. Obviously, if, if you stay with Magnolia, South Ninth will go out even further because there's only so much in funds that we can get in the cycle, and we have to wait on that. So there's not a magical pot out there unless we can, there is some separate, are some separate funds that are available for economic development projects, but neither of those are, seem to be in a position where that would be in effect. So I don't believe we'd qualify for, for those particular roads. The other thing that you need to probably take into some consideration is, in addition to the, the need to vote on the pool, you're probably looking at a minimum of two years. I, I think for full design, it's going to take you between eight months, at least eight months, to do that. And then, you're looking at construction of probably a year. So it depends how it fits in the season, but it's probably a two-year turnaround from beginning to end till you open the gate and let the folks come in. Two versus three the other way is probably what you're looking at. So that's one thing. The other thing is, is, you know, whether it's five million or not, I, the answer, the question is, is does that, would that meet the needs of a town of nearly 50,000? Answer is, I don't know, because you'd have a lot of work to do with regards to scoping that project. One of the, the big items that's in there that's been One of the, the big items that's in there that's been discussed in the past is, do you have a separate competitive pool, outdoor pool? A lot of folks want that. Some folks just look at the recreational part. Certainly, that's a pretty big cost impact by itself. So there's some, a lot of discussions that probably need to be had related to just simply what scope, what size, what features, what do you really want in Salina, Kansas? We've never said it has to be the same scope that was brought about a few years ago. It may be much different. Could be the same. It's up to you. But if we just say five million dollars, I can probably tell you, you won't get the competitive. That part will, will need to come off automatically because I, I don't even know if we can properly scope the recreational features to a town our size. Five would be pretty close, I think, but I'm not sure if we could do that or not. So there's, there's just work to be done.
What kind of timeframe, um, if we were to pass the budget as currently in front of us, um, what kind of timeline for design is necessary in order to get the construction underway next year?
From a funding perspective, um, we, I mean, we, we did leave additional funds in the balance of the sales tax. We think you would have funds to design a pool if you wanted to, the, the formal design that creates construction documents.
This corridor, is it, how far are, I know there's been some preliminary design, but...
Uh, well, we're in the, I'd like to, well, Mike's over there. I think we're pretty, well, we're pretty close to the end of final design for South Ninth. We've, we, final modifications included some sidewalks. That was the last thing we had. One other question that was brought up, Commissioner Pernie did bring up the question of the leg of, I believe, Schilling West from the intersection of Ninth West out to the entrance there of, drawn a blank on the Riffle.
Riffle.
Drive. And, and so we could, if, if it's the desire of the commission, we could have the study session just to talk about that one final time. But other than that, I mean, I, they're very close to having final design ready for South Ninth.
Seems to me like, um, that there's some possible merit to his idea. Seems like we'd be in a better position to discuss it once we get the report back from that Kenwood Park Study Group. Is it possible to delete that item from the budget at the moment? And pending our discussions in September, whenever that study group report comes back, and then if we decide to add it back in before the end of this year, will that throw the timetable off or?
Yeah, you could. There's a couple of ways you could do it. You could pass this, well, um, you could pass a capital improvement plan without the South Ninth Project, or you could leave it on and ask staff not to go forward with letting a bid yet until you look at the other options. Either way, you could do it. I, I think, given all the work that's gone into it and the priorities that have been set over the past years, you may want to leave it in there and say, staff, let's get the final design. And, and I'd have to, to check with, with Mike on the, the bid letting time and if there are any other timing factors, we, like, we could do that and get you an answer pretty quick, but, um, we could hold off until such time as you're comfortable moving forward with letting bids for that project.
Any thoughts from the other two Commissioners on that?
Can you refresh my memory and the audience? Where does phase three end?
Actually ends about the middle of the Conklin Cars used car lot.
Okay.
And this phase four then goes clear down to Riffle Drive.
Okay.
To the Tractor Supply Store on one side and the entrance to Lowe's on the other.
Yeah, there's a, you'll see when you, when you hit that, there's a pretty significant difference in what the medians look like and the, the road surfaces. You'll find a little rougher drive on that part, too.
There's a bed strip right there at Conklin Cars for several hundred feet, and then it's better again. So that farther south, it's barely noticeable except that you don't have curb and gutter and a, and a built-up median. Yeah. What do you, what do you think about the option of leaving in and instructing staff not to let bids on it? Be okay if we can discuss it one more, the whole, the whole major project capital improvement plan one more time before we let, put it out for bids. I know part of this was twenty years ago, Rufus and I, when he was city manager, so that's at least twenty years ago, right? When I was new in town, I know that, um, the, the four-lane bridge on East Crawford, he was, was pulled out. It was designed and had sat for several years, and funds came up through the state. They had this project designed. They wanted to spend the money in a certain amount of time. Somehow, they got that project funded. And at the time, a lot of people were critical of it because Crawford was only two lanes, and it looked silly to do it. But the project was designed and in the can and just waiting for funds to come along. So that's kind of where I got this idea. Blame it on Rufus, he's not here.
Well, Commissioners, one thing to think about in the longer term as well is we, these are, when you look at the South Ninth, you look at Magnolia, some of those roads are all pretty close to our fringe areas of our community. Down in, and when we look into the future, there's going to be more work on Magnolia going further out at some point in the future. There's a bridge out there. Don't think it's ready to be upgraded yet, but in the future, it will be. We have water well, a good section of water well on both sides of the interstate that'll eventually need to be upgraded. And hopefully, the water well, we can, we can do that in coordination with some economic development funding that can go into the infrastructure. That's, that's what we would look at for that. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that when the need is there. But you, you do have quite a few of those longer stretches along the fringes that at some point, we're going to have to take in and, and do some upgrading to. And it's, it's fairly expensive, as you've, as you've seen, to go from a rural design to a, an urban design. And when we talk about the budget impact, that's one thing we did see in the last eighteen months, at least, there's been a significant increase in construction as a result of fuel and other things. So we've seen that in our budget as well. It's, it's made these projects more expensive than we first estimated them to be.
Right. And ask staff not to let, let it yet.
Does it have to be the motion stating that?
No, we, we've got the message on that. If you go ahead and approve the CIP, we know not to move forward until we come back and get authorization to do that.
Motion on the two thousand and eight capital improvement plan?
Uh, Mayor, I approve, I, I move that we approve the two thousand and eight capital improvement pla, plan as stated.
Second. Motion is to approve the two thousand and eight capital improvement plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. We'll now move on to the consent agenda.
Item six point one, approve the minutes of August sixth, two thousand and seven. Item six point two, resolution number zero seven sixty four twenty five, authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application to the National Endowment for the Arts on the behalf of the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission.
Entertain a motion?
No, I have a little correction on the minutes. When the citizen spoke on the Highland Simmons Street situation, I believe it was Mary Ann Adams, is how I had it in my notes, Mary Ann Adams, who lives at twenty eighty-eight Simmons. That was the only correction I saw to the minutes.
Okay. Mayor, I'd move we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Move to approve the consent agenda with that minor correction in the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. We have no development business today, so we will continue with items of administration.
Item eight point one, second reading ordinance number zero seven ten thousand four hundred and one, amending Article Six District Regulations, Divisions eighteen, nineteen, and twenty relating to permanent and conditional uses and development limitations in the I one, I two, and I three districts.
This ordinance passed on first reading at the last meeting. We have had no comments since. I'd entertain any additional public input if there is any. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on second reading.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt. We adopt ordinance number zero seven ten thousand four hundred and one on second reading.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance zero seven dash one oh four oh one on second reading, amending Article Six District Regulations, Divisions eighteen through twenty, related to permitted and conditional uses and development limitations in the I one, I two, and I three districts, which correspond industrial park, white industrial, and heavy industrial. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Pernie?
Aye.
Mayor Joka?
Aye.
Item eight point two, first reading ordinance number zero seven ten thousand four hundred and five, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost abatement of nuisances.
Ms. Franz?
Mayor Commissioners, this is another item we normally take care of in conjunction with the budget meeting. Each year, the city sends out nuisance abatement notices to property owners notifying them they must abate a particular nuisance, whether it be tall grass in the weeds, or cleaning, or demolition of a, of a, of a structure on their property within a specified amount of time. Essentially, we tell them they, they must do something, or we will, and then bill them for the cost. In those cases where a property owner does not choose to do the work, um, the city typically contracts to do so and sends a bill to the property owner. Owners are told if they do not pay the amounts due, it'll be added to their taxes as a special assessment. This ordinance, number oh seven ten thousand four hundred and five, details the amounts that are remaining due by tract and levies and assessment against the property. You have in your packet a report showing all the amounts billed, paid, and remaining due. The total amount billed this year was twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seven cents. Six thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents of that has been paid to the city directly, and the remaining amount to be assessed is fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and eight cents. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Franz?
Uh, yes. If we're trying to adopt this ordinance, what did we do in the past? Nothing? And they just never paid their bills? Or?
Uh, we do this once a year.
So we're passing an ordinance because we've, we, what did we do before? I mean, we always gave them a bill, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we do an ordinance annually to take care of the...
To continue that?
To continue that, yes.
I gotcha. Okay.
Any additional questions?
Mayor, I wondered, and I suppose Mr. Franz would, could certainly speak to it and possibly help. It is part of the process whereby these are actually collected as special assessments against the property, and it's, this is just one step in that collection process through the county system.
And every year, you have to adopt this? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. We, we adopt it for the properties that we have abated within the past year. The costs are then certified to the county clerk along with the taxes, and it gets added to the tax bills that then go out this fall.
Okay, I get it.
So each year is a, well, not necessarily a different set of properties, but a different set of nuisances.
Right, right. There's quite a few.
And this year, none of them are so radical as to be a complete demolition of a structure or anything like that, so it's pretty a routine breakdown.
Thank you. Any public comment? Commission action?
Mayor, I'd move that ordinance number zero seven ten thousand four hundred and five, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property pay the cost of abatement of nuisances be adopted.
Second.
The motion is to adopt ordinance zero seven dash one oh four oh five, levying special assessments for certain properties for cost of abatement of nuisances. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero.
Item eight point three, resolution number zero seven sixty four twenty four, authorizing the ambulance transfer agreement with the Salina Regional Health Center.
Chief Mulliken?
Hi, I'm Larry Mulliken, your fire chief, and tonight before you, we have a commission action item that essentially takes a, a administrative agreement that we have had in place for a year and about five months. It was actually approved back in February of two thousand and six. That set a standard fee, or a set fee, for transporting in-house patients at the hospital to local sources of care and back. And in-house hos, in-house patients essentially are transported across the street to Tammy Walker and things of that nature for treatment and return to the hospital. And it all was precipitated by TAC ambulance service going out of business. And when I first started work here in January, one of the taskings I had from the city manager is to take this administrative agreement and transition that into a contract to bring it before the commission. In doing that, I had to rely on Chief Marvin Van Blairicon, our chief of EMS, to go with me to meet with the hospital. And so we started into this process realizing that we had some history in, in doing this. And so we started out at the two hundred dollar figure, which was the flat fee set back in February of two thousand and six. You know, regardless of what TAC was charging or, or whatever else was taking place at that time, that's what the administration came down and started with at, at that time. And, and there is no mileage on top of that because they are a very short type of patient transfers. You know, like I say, Tammy Walker's almost just across the street, and several others in town are, are relatively close. We do make these transfers using on-duty crews, and so as, as time permits, and we get people over to make those transfers, it works out in our day schedule to make those. So when we sat down and, and started having the discussions with the hospital in transitioning this administrative agreement, like I said, into a formalized contract, we wanted to hear the hospital's experience. And they were relatively pleased with the level of service that we were providing them. I didn't hear any complaints coming from the other side of the table at our meetings, and we were looking at the two hundred dollar figure. Now, in my mind, in looking at this, I wanted to look at several, several aspects of it, several dimensions to what we charge for providing the services that we do, realizing a couple of things. Number one, our revenue stream that flows into the ambulance service. Our revenue stream, uh, the revenues that we actually collect cover less than a third of the costs, probably providing that ambulance service. The county pays a portion to the city to operate a county-wide ambulance service, plus US commissioners authorize us every year to operate that ambulance service. And so it is heavily taxed subsidized. It is, in essence, the cit, the people's ambulance service. They have subsidized that, and that allows us to keep our charges and costs as low as possible because we do have people on fixed income. We do have people who struggle in their daily lives to, to seek medical care and to get that appropriate care, and, you know, whether it's across the street or across the state, our job is to get them in emergencies to the hospital and during routine care, follow-up care, rehabilitation, to get them where they need to go, and hopefully return them back into our community as a productive member and, and live a long life. So looking at this, Chief Van Blairicon and myself sat down with them, and we looked at the number of transfers. It numbers about, about three hundred a year that we do. Our revenue stream, getting back to looking at, at the, the reason that it's important to look at our revenue stream is, and I'll just give you a quick breakdown of it. About forty-two percent of the revenue we receive come from Medicare and Medicaid. That's a government set price of two hundred and thirteen dollars. So forty-two percent is two hundred and thirteen dollars. Another thirty-eight percent of our ambulance revenue comes from private insurance. After private insurance, about ten percent are individual pays. Those are people who, who really don't have insurance, but they do have the capacity to pay on their own. Whether they pay over time or pay in lump sum, that just depends on the individual. And then finally, the remaining amount generally is no pays. It's people who don't qualify for Medicare and Medicaid, who don't have private insurance, who can't pay individually. Those are essentially uncollectible accounts. Now, one of the real benefits that I saw in this agreement when I first started looking at it was the fact that regardless of the patient's ability to pay, regardless of where the revenue was coming from, the hospital was guaranteeing us this money upfront, that when we made these transfers or transports to that care and facility and back, that we got two hundred dollars, regardless of whether it was Medicare, whether it was private insurance, or no pays. Whether the hospital collected a dime or not, we received two hundred dollars for doing those. So when you look at what we received against what, and they took care of all the billing arrangements and, and, you know, we, we weren't, one of the nice things about it is when I started looking into this and talked to Sheila Jacobs over in the finance department, I asked Sheila, I said, well, how does the hospital pay for these transfers? Is it, how do you handle that? She said, well, every month, um... She said, "Well, every month, we send them a list of ambulance transfers that we made, and within 14 to 21 days, we have a check for that amount." And everybody knows in the medical billing business, when you bill the government, it's not 30 days. It's not two to three weeks. It's 60, 90 days out before you collect any money from the federal government. So, I think that that has a real benefit to it, and the fact that it's a direct turnaround to us and saves us, we don't have to do the billing and things of that nature. So, that was a really plus part of that. I thought that there was some trade-offs there back when they initially did this agreement back in 2006, that they must have understood that and the reason it was set at $200. Realizing that, also, the majority of the people that are... That we transport across the street for cancer care are transported down the street to our citizens. They're not strangers. They're people that live down the street from us that need to get across the street. And that's why when you look at... They've already paid for this ambulance service through their taxes. That's their ambulance service. We're transporting them across the street. That ought to be as low as possible for them in case they have to pay it out of their pocket or pay a deductible. That's an important component of it. And then, finally, when you look at providing this kind of service, it's important for us to be able to make that in a timely fashion. And like I said, using our on-duty crews and not calling people back in, it seemed to be work that we could generally take care of and that we really didn't experience that big of a problem with it. So, when we sat down with the hospital, we looked at it and realizing that Medicare pays $213, going up a little bit for fuel and things of that nature, it seemed to me that a logical place to go would be to go up a minimal amount to $220, transition this administrative agreement into a contract. And the hospital actually presented us with the contract. This is their contract that you see before you. We made some modifications to that contract, and that's why some of the differences in there that you see before you today. We did spell out that for the terms and conditions of this contract, that transfers and transports mean the same thing. And we spelled that out under a scope of services that says that it only applies to in-house patients that are transported to and from the hospital, they're not released from the hospital. Because if they are released from the hospital, then we can fall back under our regular billing services and bill Medicare and Medicaid and private insurance, and it falls into that arena. So, we took their contract, modified it, tried to clarify the terms for the condition of that contract, and get it before you tonight for consideration. And with that, Marvin, do you have anything you want to add to that while you're here?
No.
Okay. Respond to questions. With that, I'll turn it over to you and answer any questions that you might have with that, with ambulance services, and particularly with this in-house agreement, because that's really all it does. We're not changing anything we haven't done since February 2006. It just changes from administrative agreement to a contract agreement, is all it does.
Questions of the chief?
Yes, Chief Mulligan, do you charge mileage if you have to transport them to Wichita or Topeka?
Yes, we do. If they're not in-house patients, we do.
Okay.
If they're not in-house patients, we generally do. That would be a very rare occasion for us to do that.
Because if they're in-house, that's covered in that $200...
Right.
...amount.
Right.
If they are not in-house, what do you charge for mileage?
I think it's $7.10. Yeah. You could go up to like $8.15 or something like that.
And I understand you're only doing this between the hours of 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM?
That's right.
For non-urgent. If it's urgent...
Right.
I take it you will transport them?
If it's an urgent call, if it's a medical emergency, we use our on-duty crews. We transport those people red lights, hour into whatever facility that they need.
And while I understand you have enough vehicles, is that correct?
Yes.
You have six ambulances? Seven ambulances?
Seven ambulances. We have, you know, that's the thing that really strikes you about this, is that the citizens have provided every ambulance, every hour of training, every service that we provide is all tax-driven, basically.
So, now that you're beefing this up, how old are some of these vehicles? Are any of them going to have to be replaced, and are we going to be purchasing? Are you going to come up in a couple of years and say you need another?
Well, we do that on a routine basis. What we do, we transition ambulances. We buy and try and buy a new one every year to transition the fleet. When you've got seven ambulances and you buy one a year, your oldest unit's seven years old.
Right.
At least.
Right.
And I think that's a good rotation for that. I think when you start looking at... And anymore, vehicles are so computer-driven, it's almost like PCs and things of that nature. By the time they start to get seven and eight years old, these are sophisticated vehicles that have electronics on them, they power... They're far different than any trucks that you might encounter in the regular fleets. They are very specific, and they do, over time, it's almost like wiring in planes, that it deteriorates over time. So, keeping on that, replacing them every seven years is a good rotation.
Additional staff? You will be hiring additional staff? Or are you going to make do with the staff you have?
This agreement doesn't change anything that we do. I mean, we do that now with our additional staff. There's no proposal before you tonight for additional staffing tonight.
Correct.
There is, in my mind, that you'll be seeing us look to the future down the road, because I think that even looking 10, 15 years down the road, it would behoove us as a community to look 10 or 15 years down the road and see what we want our medical service delivery to look like. Because according to all the experts in the field and the new Institutes of Medicine report, EMS at the crossroads, we are going to see a dramatic shift in medical service delivery in all communities, not just ours, everyone's. Because the cost of medical care delivery is going to continue to escalate far beyond anyone's means to afford those things. And I think that each community will be grappling with how do we take care of our elderly, which I'm going to be one of those. I mean, I've got to tell you, I have a vested interest in having a good system moving forward because I will be one of those people someday. But I think that looking ahead, we need to look at those things.
Okay. So, see if I understand this. If this is going to be... You're using a staff...
Mm-hmm.
...that are going to be performing these extra duties.
Yes.
Are these... Is this part-time, full-time? And how is that going to take away from what they're doing now, protecting the city right now?
We're using firefighters right now, and this arrangement doesn't change that. We're using full-time firefighters now.
May I clarify a little? Yes. Right now, we're not doing anything more than what we've been doing since 1983, when the Fire Department absorbed the ambulance, and ended since 2006, when we wrote the original administrative agreement with Slana Regional Health Center. Slana Regional Health Center, when TAC quit, decided they were wanting us to see if they could... We could come up with the same contract or the same costs. TAC was doing that before 2006, okay? We're not changing any policies. We're not changing any procedures. We're not adding personnel. We're not adding trucks. All we're doing is changing an administrative contract to a formal contract for delivery of that in-hospital patient transport. The thing here is that these patients are already patients of the hospital. They're not being released from the hospital. These patients are being transferred from Slana Regional Health Center to either Tammy Walker Cancer Center, Slana Regional Imogen Center, to a physician's office, or some specialty care area that cannot be done at the hospital. And then, they're coming back to the hospital. That's the only part of this thing that we charge Slana Regional Health Center, a set contract. Every other patient going out of that hospital is due or is set against our normal billing procedures. They fall under the Medicare laws and everything else that we do. These are the only people that fall under this contract with Slana Regional Health Center, is they're patients, ones they are responsible for and ones they cannot charge additional fees to because it's part of their hospital contract or their hospital stay. Okay? So, we're not doing anything different. We are just changing an administrative policy into a formal contract with Slana Regional Health Center and doing so. So, that's...
I'm finished.
Well, on this, I mean, and this is just laying on the table, we haven't heard from a private ambulance company yet, but is this an exclusive agreement that the city would be the only...
No.
...ambulance service doing this?
Totally not.
So, it's up to, I mean, whoever at the hospital is arranging these medical treatment tours and times, appointments...
It would be the patient's choice, essentially.
Oh, the patient is given a choice?
Either the city or a private ambulance at their option.
Whomever. And I think that part of the reason that the hospital wants the more formal contract, it is not exclusionary. It does not say the Slana Fire Department, nor does it say somebody else. It doesn't exclude anybody else.
So, it's just that if the hospital calls the city ambulance service, this is what they're going to be paid, and this is what they're going to do.
Absolutely. Anybody can operate, anybody in addition to us can operate and provide the same services, and I hope that. I hope that if somebody can provide the same services at a lower cost, our citizens get the benefit of that. If they can provide it at a lower cost, then we need to allow them to utilize the TAC-supported ambulance service and make their best choice in their own behalf. Let the patient make the choice.
With regard to cost, just to be clear, because there's been a couple of numbers that have floated around, right now, the Fire Department would actually be, for a round trip, $30 less than what TAC formerly charged. Is that correct?
That's true. One of the things that when the contract was made up with TAC, they didn't have the resources that we have. So, they had to leave patients, go do their other things, and come back. So, they actually counted it as two runs, one going, and then one picking the patient up and coming back. We don't have to do that. We've got the manpower right now to do it where we... And usually, we're talking 15, 20, 30 minutes at the most of the patients at this care facility. So, the crews wait for them, bring them back, and we charge one flat fee for both the transport to and back to the hospital.
See, one of the things that I see in responding to that is that we get into these discussions about what TAC charged. Forget about what Jack... In my mind, forget about what they charged. Look at what Medicare reimburses us for. To me, that was the governing part of the $213 that Medicare will allow us to be reimbursed for those kinds of services, to me, is the guiding thing. And I don't know, I've heard different figures in what TAC did and didn't do back in 2005, but I just think that looking at what we're eligible for under Medicare, they pay $213, us charging the hospital $220 for everything, regardless whether they collect a dime or not out of that, seems to me to be appropriate.
Now, when people call 911, they always get the city service.
Yes.
And 911 service would supersede this?
Yes.
If the hospital called and you had all the units out on 911?
We... Our first priority is that of the citizens of Slana and our emergency bases. We have three fully-staffed units, plus a fourth unit that can go out on the street within 30 seconds. That's Station Four. All of them are ALS truce. We can actually put three more additional units on the street by either shutting down a truck company, or we bring people in, or we got staff officers through Monday through Friday, eight to five, so...
Mayor Blaricon, it might be better if you could stand a little closer to the mic.
Okay. But first call is always priority for emergency calls. And we have put transfers on hold simply because we have four and five units out on the street running emergency calls.
Do the private enterprises also field 911 calls?
No. Not currently. I mean...
No, in fact, I think that would take a lot of study on your part to allow that to occur.
I had a question about a stat, just wanted to be clear. You mentioned at one point, chief, that revenues cover about a third of the cost. You referring to the EMS service?
Right. We just did a study, a maximum study that Rod Francis is putting together, that broke the EMS costs in providing services down about a little over $3 million for providing EMS services. Our revenues don't... Are right around a million dollars. So, it provides about a third, something like that.
So, this service would be better reimbursed, or about a third comes from charges and two-thirds subsidized?
Right. In fact, you know, that's the real backbone of... And most people today consider EMS services essential services in a city. And that's just like an Institutes of Medicine report. Today, over 50% of all EMS service delivery in the country is fire-based because of the cost overhead, the cost sharing, and the efficiencies that's brought into that system. If we were totally fee-based and did not depend on the general fund or anything, the ambulance service fees would double. We would... When you look at private ambulance services in communities that are not... Do not have a fire-based component, they're twice what we charge today. And I think that that is the one thing that is a real benefit in a community. When you do have that tax-based support, you're able to keep your fees down to where people can at least struggle to afford those because they are expensive.
I think we might have some more questions for you gentlemen in a moment, but we have some, I believe, some citizens here that want to comment. So, we'll open it up to any public comment on the proposed agreement? If you give us your name and address.
Stan Fields, 407 Auto. I gave you the packet a little bit ago. We have two concerns to the city's proposal and one concern, or one comment about the private ambulance services. The object... The concerns we had with the contract were the explicitly excludes privately ambulance services. The language on the rates is not clear, and the chief has stated that private ambulance services of all types can come and go, and knowing the reason for that phenomenon would be important. On the excluding the ambulance services, the private ambulance services in the contract, and I quote from the contract, is if the operator, the city, is unable to provide the transfer, the other options include delay of the transfer until other units are available or transfer by helicopter or fixed wing.
That line doesn't seem to make any sense, since this is just... You're not going to helicopter across the street.
Well, try to transfer.
Or fly an airplane. That's why I asked a question, whether our contract is exclusive or not. And the chief explains that it is not. And I thought somewhere in your... Says you have an agreement with SRC dated July 7th, I assume of this year, July of '07.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
So, what's the problem? I mean, I don't understand the problem. If you have a similar...
Right.
...contract, then it's up to the hospital, which one they're going to call?
Well, this just... The wording in that, you know...
Is our contract substantially different from yours?
Well, the wording somewhat is, yes. And ours is for full services to the hospital, including out-of-town transfers, just any transfer needs they need at all, not just Tammy Walker Cancer Center or, you know, the Imogen Center and those. It includes all of those services.
What do you charge for mileage out of town?
We have $9.
And are you 24/7, or do you have...
Yes, 24/7.
Quick question for you.
Yes, yes.
The simple solution, it would seem to me, and I'm just going to ask you if this would solve anything or not.
Okay.
Your objections, according to this, are primarily with regard to language.
Correct.
If we were to simply clean up the language...
Mm-hmm.
What would that do?
Well, I guess for the one I just mentioned, it would, you know, ensure that a private ambulance service or another, you know, ambulance could be called.
Well, I guess, I guess, when I say what would that do?
Yeah.
How would you feel about that? Would that...
I mean...
I guess I'm looking for ways to...
Right.
...make this...
Right.
It seems to me it would be easy to add some wording in there where we certainly don't exclude a private service...
Right.
...and that we can clear up the language on the rates a little bit.
Uh-huh.
I mean, that seems like an easy fix, but I didn't know if...
Okay. I mean, as you'll find, the next item is the language on the rates is not clear. And you have the wording there on the, you know, what the contract states. And, you know, I guess our thing was that records are indicating that the city rate is 200 each way, 400 round trip for these transfers.
When it says records indicate the current rate is 400, which... What records? Is that hospital records?
The hospital management provided those numbers. They looked at their actual billing, and, I mean, I didn't see the billing, but...
Is there anyone that can attest?
No. I'm curious where you obtained that information. We haven't seen it.
The, like I said, this is the hospital management was able to give that.
Did you have a specific contact person?
I don't know if they really wanted to be named. I mean, I could talk to you about some of that.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of thinking since we're negotiating with the hospital, I wouldn't think they would be...
Right.
Or I think they'd be open to that, is...
Right. Right.
Is there a reason they wouldn't want to be named?
It looks like paragraphs 2.2 and 2.3 specifically make it clear that we're talking 220 round trip and 110 one-way. So, I don't... And there's nothing in here that makes this exclusive to us only. I mean, it makes this contract exclusive, but it doesn't say they can't... It doesn't prevent... There's nothing that prevents the hospital from having a dozen other contracts. So, I don't think that your objections are... I think they're covered.
So, I guess our biggest issue was with the pricing because we'd be losing a number of transfers by that price if, you know, if they went by that price.
What is your cost?
For...
For the transfer?
I mean, that's the agreement that we have with the hospital. And if they wish to release those details, they can do that.
I think they're covered.
But that was...
And the patient is given the choice of who to call? Is that right? I thought I heard that over here somewhere.
I think Marvin stated that.
Is that correct?
It depends. I mean, I mean, it's actually, we get notification from the hospital. How that notification comes down, we have no idea. I mean, I know that Charlie Grimold, who's here from Salina Regional Health Center, he sit in on the contracted deal. We receive our calls from...
You want to talk in the mic?
We receive our calls from the hospital through either a care coordinator, or through an emergency room, or through a house supervisor. That's who we receive calls from for transfers. For the calls that we're talking about here on this contract, we get those calls from the house supervisor, or the floor nurse manager, or Tammy Walker Cancer Center, whatever, telling us that they want to transfer a patient from this time to this... At this time to this point. We don't go in and advertise or ask the patient which one they do. That's up to the hospital. And I believe that's also up to the nurse manager or the care coordinator to make those decisions.
So, they can call either the city or the private enterprise?
Yeah.
That's correct, Commissioners. Again, this is a two-way, two-party agreement. It's not a policy. It's not a regulation or anything like that. It's simply an agreement between the city and the hospital, under the presumption that the hospital wants to interact with the city and have this arrangement. And so, certainly, it would be up to the hospital to make that decision with whatever protocols they have internally as to whom they're going to call. And then, if they call us under this agreement, we would fulfill the services for the cost that's specified in the agreement. Also, and after you finish with this discourse, I think the city attorney could probably clarify any language questions you might have related to the contract.
With your permission, Mr. Fields, I'd like to ask Mr. Van Blaerkorn another question while he's up here.
Sure, sure.
Is this the first... When you started providing this service last year, I believe, being last year, was it? Is this the first time the city has been involved in that kind of service?
Depends on what you... I mean, we have always been involved in non-emergency transport. We've always been involved in non-emergency transports. We've never stopped from the year of 1983 or back in '79 when I started. We always did non-emergency patient transports from the hospital. It wasn't until 1985, '86, when Tom Schuler quit, who was one of our paramedics, and started up his own ambulance service, he decided to start a transfer vehicle, okay? And we embraced that, as a matter of fact, because at that time, we only had two paramedic units out on the street. And him taking the non-emergencies cleared us up to do emergency calls and some of the things we had to do. Then in 2000... December, I think like December 14th of 2005, he informed us that he was closing his doors January 1 at midnight, 2006, and he was no longer going to be transporting patients. So, we had to gear back up to take over that non-emergency transport. I believe it was then Mike Metro or Carla Yost, one of the two contacted us about setting up the same contract that TAC was using with Salina Regional Health Center at that time. We negotiated between myself, Chief Easton at that point in time, Randy Peterson, who was the CEO at Salina Regional Health Center, Mike Metro, and Carla Yost, all... So, and this is how this contract came into play. The contract was always written on a flat fee of round-trip transport. We charged $200 initially, starting in December or February of 2006. We continued that till we were approached to make this a formal contract by the hospital. And we increased our fees to 220 because of the fee of $213 was what Medicare was reimbursing. So, we went up just a little above that to cover our costs. But it is a round-trip fee. There is no $400. We charge $200 to Salina Regional Health Center on those transfers that we take.
Okay. See if I get this straight in my mind. So, when... Mr. Fields, when you decided to enter into this business, I see it's... I mean, you didn't wake up one morning and say, hey, I'm gonna...
No, we took a lot of time to...
Yeah. I can see that you probably started when you were aware that there was no service in Salina or that it had left.
Shortly after, yes.
Did you visit with the fire department regarding you wanting...
Not the fire administration, no.
City? Anybody with the city? Or I see that you did something with...
The hospital, we did have a number of meetings with the hospital.
Okay. So, you went into a business plan?
Mm-hmm.
And I can see by your timeline here, when you started, when you leased your building, purchased your equipment, hired your staff. So, are you saying that we can't all work together? I mean, is it possible that fire department yields 911 calls and together we yield patient transport, whoever's available, whoever's requested? I guess I can't... I'm not following on who calls you from the hospital.
That... My understanding of the way it works, I mean, they don't just go up and say to the patient, we've got, you know, four services to choose from, which one of these would you like? They just call the one, you know, that they have an agreement with that, you know, is the cheapest agreement. Because that's, you know, they're going to get billed for that, so...
But it's not exclusivity. So, do you have an agreement also with the hospital?
Right.
Okay. So, they don't say your name? They don't give the patient two options?
I understand our contract was written prior to even knowing that Life Touch was now in the ballgame. So, our contract was, at that point, a contract because we were the only ambulance service in town.
Having to fill in that gap.
Having to fill in that gap. So, whatever contract we wrote up was simply because we were the only ambulance service. So, we didn't write it to make it exclusive. It has points in there that we worked out with the hospital on transfer agreements, on when we would transfer, when we wouldn't transfer, and stuff like that for other parts of our transport business, not the Tammy Walkers that the $220 agree on. But there are other parts to this contract that also state, you know, that the other transfers, which we charge the insurance company for, whether it be Medicare, Medicaid, third-party auto insurance, whatever, we do have policies in place as well with the hospital on when we do transport and when we don't transport.
I think the real issue here, and it was put this way in a letter that all the Commissioners received, and this... Whoever wants to respond to this, but a statement was made that purpose city government to provide services not available in a private sector. So, the question then is, is this a service that the government should be in?
Do you want to answer? I'm going to answer. If I have my opinion.
Well, we share the same opinion.
Would you like my take on that?
Yeah, I think that is the crux of the matter.
Well, I think that when you look at essential services, and this is not by any means my first exposure to this, is that generally, when you get into situations like this, that there's no doubt that private ambulance services can come in and out of business all the time. But our citizens rely on essential services and EMS, whether it's transport or emergency care services, they rely on that. It's just like when Eagle Med left town. How many of you were called and told that Eagle Med was going to leave town? They loaded up, left the next day, you know? That's what happens in communities all across this country every day. And I think that it behooves us, as a caring and compassionate community, to have those services always available to that. And I'll tell you one other thing that you get into, and I don't mean this by any means Life Touch or anybody else, but I have seen this practice in the past, that when you have government-subsidized ambulance services and private ambulance services working side by side and doing transports, if one is given priority over the other, what happens is that private ambulance companies cherry pick. They pick the patients to transport that they know will pay off. And the ones that are not going to pay off, they have the local fire department or the local emergency responders make that transport because it shifts the burden to the taxpayer, you know? They want the income part of it. Actually, we don't make an income. Everything that we make in our ambulance service is plowed back into services, training, and all that service-delivery Mecca that goes on in providing those services to the community. It wouldn't go on if we didn't have the revenue stream and your commitment as a city commission to carry those services out, both emergency and non-emergency. And for some reason, we have a tendency in this country to think that non-emergency services are not time-dependent. They are very time-dependent. They are very patient-critical to get across to that, to cancer treatments, to get into Kansas City, to get into especially hospitals in Wichita that need to be done. It is as serious as emergency services. So, don't, by any stretch of the imagination, think that non-emergency services are not essential services because they are very critical. And when you're laying there and you want to go get treatment, it's very important to you.
I know. We've interrupted you numerous times.
On that...
I guess I just offer you the opportunity to make any additional...
Okay. I mean, you know, this isn't something we just, you know, threw together either. And... So... Well, in closing, I would like to say that the vast majority of the businesses in the United States are small, private enterprises like ours. It's not uncommon for the public and private sectors to work together towards achieving a common goal. And if the city's proposal with its SHR, SRI, Salina Regional, is approved, in a way, it contradicts the city's vision statement, and it will put Life Touch at a huge disadvantage and a threat... It would threaten our futures of business because of that pricing, which I have in there, but...
Yes. Any additional questions, Mr. Fields, while he's up there?
Commissioners, if I may, I have one question. Stan, we talked probably a week and a half ago, and at that point...
Yeah.
There was confusion as to whether mileage was being charged. And we clarified that since this is a local only, that the 220 was just a flat 220 there and back, no mileage.
Sure.
And at that point, you seemed to be pretty comfortable with that. You understood it and seemed to be comfortable with it. Didn't seem like there were any issues.
Right, I understood that there was no mileage, correct.
Right. I don't understand what's changed in the last week and a half.
On the... As far as the round-trip price or the...
No, as far as your perspective of whether the price that we were talking about was satisfactory, not hugely undercutting or...
Right.
Too high, wherever it might be.
You can get a straight answer.
And maybe that's something you guys, you know, discuss with the hospital as far as what's been getting billed or, you know, or... Because I know what the contract says.
Sure. I understand that. I'm just saying...
So, I'm just saying, if it is the 400, then that's an obvious, you know, that undercuts it pretty bad. You know, whereas if it actually is getting billed 200, then, you know, I... Obviously, that's not undercutting, so...
Yeah, I'm just saying, based on our discussion a week and a half ago, and we clarified that the price was 220 round-trip...
Mm-hmm.
And no mileage because it's local, you seemed to be satisfied then, but you're not today. And I don't know what changed in that.
I guess maybe I gave the wrong impression to you during our meeting. Mainly, I was trying to get an understanding, you know, from you, and you still had some questions you were going to check on.
Right.
You know, and I think you did that, and so...
Okay. Right.
Mr. Fields, can I ask how many people are employed at your business?
We have eight employees, three full-time.
Sorry.
Eight employees.
Okay.
Three of those are full-time.
And a paramedic?
Yes. We have one full-time paramedic, yes.
Okay.
But we have multiple part-time paramedics.
Charlie, can you speak at all? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I didn't know if you could speak at all to the... Just the billing situation, make sure that we are... And I don't know if you can do that or not, but we're not... I'm assuming we're not charging 400 when we're saying we're charging 220?
As I understand it, the terms of this agreement are pretty much the way it works now, which is it's a flat fee for round-trip service. We are the payer, and so I don't really have any axe to grind one way or the other. I think it's a non-exclusive agreement at a flat fee for a transfer across the street, down the street to the imaging center. What we need as a hospital is an affordable, quality, reliable service for that. And as a non-exclusive agreement, we can have one, two, 50 different agreements, as long as we have the providers available and they can provide the service when we need it.
Is this price... I don't know if anyone, any of you have checked with like communities, but is the $220 within a reasonable range of what's being provided out there?
I can't answer that. I haven't looked at other communities myself. It's more than we'd like to pay. We'd like to pay.
There is some...
So there.
Slightly different. I'm still a little confused with this paragraph. There is some strange, odd language here in the section 1, 1.2 availability that refers to transfers to Kansas City, Topeka, and Wichita. Is that really supposed to be in this contract? Is there a separate contract for transfers? Does the city provide transfers to other cities?
I'd just comment briefly that the only portion of this that's... Involves dollars being spent is for inpatient transport, which means these are patients at the hospital as inpatients needing a service that we do not have available within the hospital building, and therefore, we need to transport the patient down the street or across the street for that service.
Did that last?
So, otherwise, the use of urgent or emergent transportation, whether that be to Wichita, Kansas City, or wherever, is open to the services that are available, which would include Salina EMS, would include private EMS services, would include the Eagle Meds and the other types of services, so...
So, let me read that.
The reason that this was put into this agreement was, is about three months ago, we sat down with Salina Regional Health Center to discuss our transfer problems that we were having, okay? This is the language right out of their policy and procedure as well as our policy and procedure. What it does, it takes the other portions of the transfer business and places it also into this contract. We do not... I shouldn't say we do not. We have limitations on what we take after a certain period of time, okay? So, this really does not have a effect on the inpatient transport system. This just talks about what we will do, why wouldn't we transfer a patient, and so on like that.
Well, do we transport patients from Salina Regional Health Center to Kansas City, Topeka?
Yes, on a daily basis. We just took one out this morning.
That's really not covered by the payment...
No.
...contents in here.
No.
So, why is it even... It shouldn't even be mentioned in here, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, Marvin, for clarification, I see what Commissioner Purney's saying. Though we do, when requested, transfer to Kansas City, Topeka, or Wichita for Salina Regional, the intent of this agreement is just the local transfers.
Right.
So, that's... This language probably isn't necessary in this particular agreement, I would think. Does that seem... I want to make sure that's within the intent of how it was drawn up, but it seems to me that based on local transports, you wouldn't need it. Commissioner, one other question on language that I think we can fix too, because it seems to me unless we find we're... That I'm not understanding this correctly, we could strike that last sentence under 1.2. Also, the sentence that was brought up earlier, it says if the operator is... It's in the same paragraph. If the operator is unable to provide the transfer, other options include a delay of the transfer until other units are available or transfer by helicopter or fixed wing. until other units are available or transferred by helicopter or fixed wing. Certainly, the portion of the sentence that says, "or transferred by helicopter or fixed wing," is not needed, as mentioned before, for local transfers. Again, I think this was brought, probably brought in from a more general agreement. One question is, could that be replaced with, or choose another provider? Because what happens is, is that Slinea Regional certainly has a choice of who they call first to do the transfer. This is not exclusive in any way. However, once they call us, we're down under the availability paragraph here. And under that, there's only really one option. Well, the way it's worded, there are a few options. One is a delay of transfer, which by itself isn't the, may not be the best option. Obviously, the helicopter fixed wing isn't applicable, so the other would be choose another provider. So there's always, I don't know what language they have in the other private agreement, but there should always be a backup to whomever you think you'll call the most. And that way, it's covered that way.
That way, the hospital wouldn't be obliged to wait until we have somebody available. They can go immediately to a, make another call immediately to a private carrier.
Yeah, I think at this point, unless we specify a certain number of minutes or something, it'd be their discretion. If they call and we have all of our units out and we say, hey, it'll be 35 minutes before we can get there. It may depend on the type of transfer, it may depend on some other factors. Certainly, it would be their discretion to then say, we'll wait for you or we could choose another provider under the agreement. I don't think it's our intention to have them wait, you know, in perpetuity if we're tied up in a major situation. I think given, really, our mission is that someone would be available to provide that service. We want that service to be provided, whether or not we can provide it. Certainly, this agreement says if they call us, we would be the first one to provide it. But if we say we can't provide it in the time needed, then it makes sense that they would have an option at that point in time to call someone else. That takes any question about exclusivity out of it.
So you would add that phrase on at the end of that sentence?
Actually, I think we're talking about two different contracts in a way because we have inpatient transfer and then we have, if you want to talk to, it's probably inpatient transport would be a better term because we're transporting a patient. We're never transferring patient care. We're transporting a patient from one area to another, okay? And then we're bringing them back. That's a patient transport and that's what we're talking about here in this contract. And Commissioner Purney might be right in the fact that this deals with patient transfers, which may be going to Kansas City, Topeka, Wichita, Overland, Osborne, wherever.
Commissioner, let me make a suggestion. We've had a lot of discussion as to whether this is intended to be strictly local or not. I want to recommend that we probably need to do some language clarification here. Given that, recommend that we might go ahead and postpone action on this item for one week, bring it back to you. That way, we can clarify. I want to be sure that this is crystal clear as to what the intent is and who's providing what service when on our, from our perspective. I think we can clear that up pretty quickly and bring it right back to you. If that sounds okay.
I'd move that this, I so move, yeah.
Guess we weren't done yet.
Name and address, I suppose?
Yes, it starts.
Stan Fields of the Senior Variety, 156 Sights Drive. I appreciate the offer to clarify the language and Stan and I have gone over the contract many times and we were concerned about that. It seemed like there was some exclusivity in that, so I think that would help one of the concerns. Another concern still would be the cost factor of having the information about the $400 before and the $220 now, quote, "to and from." The "to and from" could apply probably both ways. It could apply 222 and 220 from, or it could apply to the round trip. So if that language could be clarified. And during the time, while they're looking at that language, I think it would be appropriate to have actual documentation because I don't think it would be a fact of medical record, would it be, just the billing? Yes. Okay, because hypothetically, totally hypothetical, if it were $400 before and now it's $220 round trip, then I would have some suspicions about the timing of that. So I'd like to clarify that too, if we could.
Would you be happy to share the information that you have related to the billing?
I don't have any. The information has been exchanged verbally.
Okay. Yeah, we can't make decisions based on that, we'll have to.
Now, his billing, yes.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
I'll just make a brief comment. I'm a little confused as to the, well, first of all, I'm not used to having relatively minor agreements stretch out over weeks. But with all due respect to my good friend Greg, I know that when we get legal language involved, sometimes they tend to stretch out for a while. But I personally don't see a lot of issue with this. We negotiate a fair market value price. It's a non-exclusive agreement. We'll continue with non-exclusivity. So we'll provide whatever information is needed to answer your questions and be sure that the language in the agreement is clear. So I don't think that'll be a barrier at all.
So in looking at the billing, then who is in charge of getting that information and delivering that? Who would be?
We can make that request to the hospital.
Okay. Mr. Brett, additional comment?
My name's Kim Brown, 649 East Prescott. Stan is my son-in-law. I didn't come here intending to say anything today, but I just can't stand it. I'm also a contractor and so our whole business is based on working with governments throughout the state. And I appreciate the explanation of the $220 per trip, but it bothers me, especially after we've talked about the budget and how people on fixed incomes are affected. It bothers me that we are quick to say, well, this is all we're going to get from Medicare, so that's all we're going to get from anyone. As I see it, that is not free enterprise. You know, the idea is to try and allow businesses to make a profit. If that's all that you're going to get from Medicaid, I don't know anything about the system, I can understand that, but to purposefully get all of the others at a lower than market cost bothers me as free enterprise.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? You were going to make a motion? I thought I was. I almost want to ask Kim Brown, you're saying we should be charging more than 220 for a round trip? Is that what you're saying?
Well, sure, but, you know, I'm, what's the word?
So your firm wants to be charged $400 around, wants to charge $400 a trip, we should charge $400?
No, I believe that that's why the cities be, continue to get lower. We don't charge what it costs. No, I mean, I can understand, Charlie hates to hear this, but. I understand that, but, you know, that isn't how private business works. And we go all the time and we're competing against governments in our construction business. Well, we can't compete if you're really going to get down to dollar, what somebody says they can do to actual cost.
Okay, at any rate, I would make a motion to postpone this for one week to clarify particularly the paragraph, section one, paragraph 1.2 that has language that is not relevant to this matter at all. And perhaps also correct in paragraph, section two, 2.2 and 2.3, to clarify that the patients to and from means round trip.
I'll second that.
Any other, well, okay, that's fine.
Motion is to postpone this matter for one week. Decision on the EMS contract with hospital for transport services. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero.
Item 8.4, first and second reading of ordinance number 07-10406, adopting the 2007 STO.
Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you. The 2007 edition of the standard traffic ordinance, or STO, has recently been issued by the League of Kansas Municipalities. The new edition incorporates changes in state law that were passed during the 2007 legislative session. City staff is recommending emergency consideration since, for both first and second reading of, at today's meeting, as the changes in state law actually took effect on July 1st of this year. The following is a list of the only changes that were made. Section one, definitions, section 30, DUI adds that on a second conviction, the court must order that every vehicle owned or leased by the defendant either be equipped with an ignition interlock device or impounded for two years. Section 103, using headphones in vehicles, that deletes a provision, making it unlawful to have a television receiver in the vehicle which is visible from the driver's seat. Section 114.1, unlawful operation of all-terrain vehicles, allows all-terrain vehicles to be operated in cities that authorize their operation. Section 114.2, unlawful operation of worksite utility vehicles, prohibits worksite utility vehicles from being operated more than just incidentally on any highway or within city limits unless authorized specifically by the city. Section 18, or section 182, excuse me, child passenger safety restraint systems includes trailer truck or farm truck in definition of passenger vehicle. Section 182.1, seat belts, requires that occupants between ages 14 and 18 wear seat belts and makes that a primary violation. Provides that warning should be issued for that violation until January 1, 2008 and provides for a $60 fine for that violation. Changes the fine for adult seatbelt violations from $10 to $30 and includes trailer truck, farm truck and other vehicles in the definition of passenger vehicle. Section 194, driving losses suspended, limits the minimum penalty of 90 days imprisonment and $1,500 fines for third or subsequent conviction to defendants suspended due to certain specific things such as refusal of DUI testing, a conviction for no insurance, a conviction for any murder or manslaughter crime relating to the operation of a motor vehicle and a conviction for habitual violator. The recommendation is that you approve the ordinance on first reading, declare that an emergency exists so that second reading can take place today and pass the ordinance on second reading.
Any questions, Ms. Wyatt?
Yeah, is that really right that we can now have a TV in the front seat in the driver's view? And why in the world would we want to allow that? I mean, there's not, well, you already have our microwave and our makeup mirror and our telephone and our computer. Can we change this?
Legally, the city can adopt, can adopt the STO without including that.
Right, this is just, the STO is simply a culmination of the new statute. So I suppose if it was important enough, we could go back through and see for sure whether or not this applies to all cities, but I suspect that because it's in the STO, it does. I don't know.
It just seems. And then the other two, right after that, the all-terrain vehicle and the worksite vehicle are, if we have, we can then follow those up that will allow us to use certain low-powered, slow-moving utility vehicles for certain purposes in the city.
Yeah, these are the two changes that are prompting our big review on all the slow-moving vehicles. And so we're going to try to take these and give you all the options that are out there and see where you want to go.
Additional questions? Thank you very much. Any public comment? Commission action?
Mayor, I'd move we approve ordinance number 07-10406 on first reading. I'm not sure how we do this exactly. Do I need to, go ahead and?
Need a second to that motion? Okay, motion is to adopt ordinance 07-10406, amending chapter 38, article one of the Slinea Code by adding the, adopting the 2007 standard traffic ordinance. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. Since that state law has already gone into effect, they are asking for a motion to declare an emergency which would allow for a same-day reading on second reading.
Mayor, I knew that we declare an emergency and consider this ordinance for same-day second reading.
Second.
Motion is to declare emergency to allow a second reading today. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. Is there a motion on second reading?
That's my turn? No, I just did that. May, I moved that ordinance number 07-10406 relating to the standard traffic ordinance be approved on second reading.
Second. Motion is to adopt ordinance number 07-10406 on second reading, amending Slinea Code by adopting the 2007 standard traffic ordinance. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Mayor Jilka?
Aye.
That passes four to zero.
Item 8.5, first and second reading of ordinance number 07-10407, adding section 23-2 to chapter 23, article one of the Slinea Code, giving the municipal court the jurisdiction to hear DUI, domestic battery and theft cases that could be third or subsequent offenses.
Ms. Wyatt?
This proposed ordinance would incorporate changes in state law that occurred during the 2007 legislative session. Also, this legislation was drafted to correct problems regarding municipal court's subject matter jurisdiction created by the Supreme Court in State v. Elliott. This change would not change the current Slinea municipal court practices.
Any questions? Thank you very much. I'd entertain any public comment, if there is any. Commission action?
Mayor, I'd move we pass ordinance number 07-10407 on first reading.
Second.
Motion is to adopt ordinance 07-10407, adding section 23.2 to chapter 23, article one of Slinea Code, giving the municipal court jurisdiction to hear DUI, domestic battery and theft cases that would be, that could be third or subsequent offenses. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. entertain a motion to declare an emergency to allow another reading today?
So move.
Second.
Motion is to declare an emergency to allow for second reading on this ordinance since the state law has already gone into effect. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. Passes four to zero.
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance number 07-10407 on second reading.
Second. Motion is to adopt the ordinance 07-10407 on second reading. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Mayor Jilka?
Aye.
Passes four to zero.
Item 8.6, first reading ordinance number 07-10408, adding section 23-3 to chapter 23, article one of the Slinea Code, addressing authority for sentencing and probation issues.
Judge Stoss?
Good afternoon. We're asking you to consider adopting this ordinance, which basically adopts the state statute. It's a new ordinance, it's not amending anything that's currently in the city code. The primary reason is to clarify that when the court places a defendant on probation, that the standard conditions of probation that are set out in subsection E are mandatory in every case. The only other slight change from state law is in subsection H, which specifically authorizes the city to proceed on a potential probation violation within 30 days after the term of probation would have expired. after the term of probation would have expired.
Any questions of Judge Stoss? Thank you very much. Entertain any public comment, if there is any? Commission action?
Mayor, I'd move we pass ordinance number 07-10408 on first reading.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 07-1048, adding a section in Slina City Code addressing authority for sentencing and probation issues. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero.
Item 8.7, first reading ordinance number 07-10409, adding section 25-101 to chapter 25, article 6 of the Slina Code, making it a violation for city ordinance, of city ordinance to fail to pay for motor fuel.
Ms. Wyatt?
This would make it a violation of city ordinance to fail to pay for motor fuel. Would allow municipal court to hear and determine those cases.
So what happens now? I mean, this, we don't, this theft of motor fuel isn't theft of property that's already covered?
It is, but these cases currently go to, have to be charged in district court. It isn't a city ordinance currently.
So that would move it to municipal court, then?
So you have to...
Is that correct?
We have to have an ordinance for every possible object being stolen, like in order to prosecute it in municipal court? Is that what this is all about? I mean, like, if my cellphone, my annoying cellphone is stolen, do I have to go to district court, or is it municipal court?
Just about everything else is covered by the general theft ordinance. Which we do have in municipal court.
So why isn't fuel?
I don't specifically know why that isn't covered. There are some different penalties involved with theft of motor fuel.
But some court will prosecute you if you're charged with theft of motor fuel, right?
Yes.
The incidence is that are been more frequent lately. Yeah, the price.
Seems strange, okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of with...
I might just clarify. Jennifer touched on what I think the difference is. Under the state statute, if you're convicted under that specific statute, it mandates that certain action be taken against your driving privileges. But in order for that act, for the Department of Motor Vehicles to take that action, you have to be convicted under that specific statute, specifically for theft of motor fuel. So by enacting a city ordinance, then we could do it in municipal court, but it would have the same effect on their driving privileges. If we prosecuted it under a general theft statute, they wouldn't be able to take the action on the driving privileges.
It's a good idea, then.
Well, it...
Didn't know that.
Well, what's the results in more people driving with suspended licenses?
So I guess the goal is just, we deem taking driving privileges away an appropriate punishment with this sort of related crime.
Able to pay for motor fuel.
I guess.
Well...
Sounds like it, yeah.
This would allow us to handle those cases as opposed to
District court.
The police department having to refer those to district court.
Okay.
Okay.
Any public comment? Commission action?
I'm not making a motion for this.
Someone has to. Well, do we have to?
Mayor, I move that we accept ordinance number 07-10409 on the first reading, adding section 25-101 to chapter 25, article 6 of the Slina City Code, making it a violation of city ordinance to fail to pay for motor fuel.
Does the mayor allow to second that motion? I will second that. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10409, adding section 25-101 to chapter 25, article 6 of the Slina City Code, making it a violation of city ordinance to fail to pay for motor fuel. On behalf of all the convenience store owners, I'm gonna support it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero.
Item 8.8, approval of contract with Union Pacific Railroad for the proposed 2007 railroad crossing improvements, project number 07-2646.
Mayor and Commissioners?
Ms. Frazier, I'm sorry.
Three railroad crossing improvement projects have been scheduled within the 2007 CIP program, which include the locations of Broadway and Dover Drive, West Magnolia Road, and Wayne and Forest Streets. These improvements will replace two wooden plank crossings and one rubber crossing with concrete panel crossings, along with new asphalt approaches at each location. The improvements will provide a smoother crossing for traffic by replacing existing crossings that have deteriorated and have misaligned planks and/or rubber sections with the new higher-quality concrete crossing panels. Union Pacific Railroad has agreed to a cost-sharing plan that has been proposed to split these expenses. This is standard and customary for the replacement projects in non-mainline sections of track. Also, Saline County has agreed to participate with the cost-sharing for the West Magnolia Road project. The actual cost will be based on the exact expense, and these are estimates that we have at this time from UP Railroad. West Magnolia Road estimated cost is $58,761. UP Railroad's share of that would be $17,628.30. The city's share would be $20,566.35. Saline County would also pay a matching 35% of that project at $20,566.35. The second project is Broadway and Dover Drive. Estimated cost for that track improvement is $79,300. UP's portion of that would be $27,755. The city's portion, $51,545. The third track improvement project is Wayne and Forest Streets, and the estimated cost is $56,068. UP Railroad's portion, $19,623.80. The city's share, $36,444.20. Sufficient funds are budgeted in the 2007 CIP budget for these three proposed replacement projects. Staff recommends the approval and authorization to sign contracts with UP Railroad for the proposed 2007 railroad crossing improvements, which is project number 07-2646 as presented. Be happy to answer any questions.
Question, Mr. Frazier? Seeing none, I'd entertain any public comment, if there is any? Commission action?
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the contract with Union Pacific Railroad for the proposed 2007 railroad crossing improvements in project number 07-2646.
Second. Motion is to approve a contract with UP Railroad for the proposed 2007 railroad crossing improvements. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero.
Item 8.9, award of contract for the 2007 street sidewalk improvements, project number 07-1624.
Ms. Place?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The arterial sidewalks project is a component of the 2007 sidewalks and ramps program. This category is for the construction of missing pieces of sidewalk along arterial and collector streets that connect sidewalks on either side or connect neighborhoods to other sidewalk systems. This year's projects includes the following locations: North Street, Lakewood Middle School to Front Street, Quincy Street, Republic to Beloit, Hartland Avenue from Robin to approximately 225 feet north-northwest, Wayne Avenue from Highland to Simmons and Simmons Street, Wayne Avenue to South Middle School. The last two portions of this were added due to the anticipated removal of the pedestrian overpass at Broadway and Hagman. We were hopeful that that project would be started by now so that we could route these students through this area, and then the Wayne, the Wayne Avenue and Simmons Street is the proposed location that the pedestrian study determined that students affected by the removal of that pedestrian overpass would be routed in order to get to South Middle School. The safest crossing was determined to be at the location of Otto at at Ninth Street there. Significant discussion came about after we initially sent out letters to residents in the area about where there's, this sidewalk would be specifically, again, in the location of Wayne Avenue. Originally, we had the sidewalk proposed on the south side of Wayne. It would be a sidewalk that would run about a foot inside the property line. We had some, some significant concerns, so we had a neighborhood meeting at the time before last week's commission meeting addressed what we felt was the concerns of the area. Additional concerns were raised at last week's meeting, which we then again had another neighborhood meeting to give as much input again as we could. The proposed design in that area now is, is along the north side of Wayne Avenue. It will be a back-of-curb sidewalk. It will be a five-foot wide sidewalk versus the, what was previously proposed as a four-foot sidewalk. The initial concerns were the addition of an addition, or the addition of a street crossing and the location of those crossings. We have worked with BWR, who was a pedestrian study consultant, really to determine that the biggest portion was at the corner of Highland and Wayne. We have now proposed that that be a diagonal crossing, which is very unique, but with the situation that is involved with that intersection being, we originally started looking at that as a three-legged intersection, but it functions as a two, which is primarily just a straight-through. We do have very good visibility from both pedestrians and the traffic coming through that area, so we determined that that would be a safe crossing. We have told the, with the last meeting that we had with the neighborhood citizens, we said that we would also investigate the school zone in that area, whether we need to add additional signage or some, possibly some additional lights. We are going to be checking into that. One thing I will mention that came about also is that the other issue with moving that sidewalk to the north side of Wayne, there was some concern about city crews when they go through and plow snow. The snow would be, then be essentially placed up on the sidewalk now. Ken Kennedy, Director of Operations with Slina Public Schools, has offered that as the city crews shovel the sidewalk, or shuffle the, the snow off the sidewalk along Simmons that is proposed there at South Middle, they will also do the one-block section on North Wayne, and he said he would do that as long as he is Director of Operations at Slina Public Schools. On Tuesday, July 24th, bids were received for this project. Davis Concrete Design, their proposed bid, $63,717.75. The engineer's estimate for this was $73,594. The budget, the 2007 budget allocates $169,000 in the special gas tax funds for the 2007 sidewalks and ramps program. $69,000 of this is for the arterial sidewalks program. In, in the same talks with Mr. Kennedy from Slina Public Schools, he offered to participate in the cost of this project, primarily in the location on Simmons Street. His partition, his participation amount is $9,950. This is essentially about 50% of the cost of the sidewalk along Simmons Street. This would, in effect, make the total cost allocated to the city of Slina be $53,767.75. It is recommended that the city commission award the contract for the arterial street sidewalk improvements to Davis Concrete Construction in the amount of $63,717.75. Be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Questions, Mr. Place?
Is the Seventh Street one also just a back of the curb?
No, it will be, uh, it'll be up by the fence, correct.
On North Street? Yeah, North Street for Lakewood School is, we did never discuss that before. After that, both sides of the street, one side of the street, set back from the curb, what's it like?
One side, and I believe it's, it's back, or not back of curb, but it's back to the property line.
So it is along the property line?
Yes.
So it's like the traditional sidewalk? Okay. Now, the Simmons Street one is on the South Middle School property?
Correct.
Well, to the property line.
Well, it's, it's not up to the property line. It's about a foot.
The east side of the street.
What's that?
East side of the street.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And back away from the curb.
Can I ask a quick question? Snow removal is what prompted me to think, who is responsible for that sidewalk from Ninth Street to Highland that runs in between?
Houses.
That those two houses are responsible for that long strip, and then what about the sidewalk leading right up until the stoplight? For the kids that are crossing?
For the, for the piece that's in between there, I, I can't tell you specifically.
Because he is, with USD 305, he's going to do the snow removal on Wayne and Simmons. Made me look at that map again and think, okay, well, if he's gonna, if he's going to remove the snow there, there's a little bit of sidewalk between those two properties to the main sidewalk, all the way over to where I believe is the light on Otto and Ninth. So if, if it's really snowy, are these kids just kind of walking through there until they can get to Highland and then use the sidewalk that will be cleared off there? Just curious.
I don't have an answer. I don't know.
Yeah, Commissioners, we'll check and see who's, who's, who's been taking responsibility to clean off the sidewalk. We'll be happy to offer it to USD 305 if they're willing to take it.
Well, I, what prompted this, if they're doing Highland and, and, or Wayne, excuse me, Wayne and Simmons, wondered if they would go all the way.
Yeah, if they, it may depend on how they do it. If it's more of a manual job, it's quite a manual job with the new sidewalk that's going in.
That's a long sidewalk, yeah.
That would be a lot of work if it's, but if there's a tractor involved, one would expect it wouldn't be that much more.
Okay.
Does anybody have any idea what the number of pedestrians really is? Are we talking 10 or 12 kids a day? Are we talking 200?
We, we did a sample. This, that specific area there on Wayne and then on Simmons is, is for the students affected with the removal at that pedestrian overpass at Broadway and Hagman. So it's for these students that are west of Broadway and south of Cloud. We did, we did a random sample. We did have a meeting at the, at the school when we were doing the pedestrian study. Out of the approximately 120 to 130 students that were affected by this, we took a sample of about 30. The teachers just took a random sample of the ones in this area. Of that sample, we asked the students, you know, who in the last year has actually walked to school? And of that sample, we got seven students that said they had walked at one point in the last year. We did find out that considerably more students actually make the return trip home. Much more of them are dropped off and then, then end up walking home. Additionally, with that, just to add, we do hope that with the, with extending the sidewalk on Simmons down to the corner of Wayne and on over, we do hope that there will be more students using this sidewalk.
Additional questions? Any public comment?
I'm Della Tamanic. I live at 349 Maple. Mayor and Commissioners, we purchased our home in 1974. Our three children went to South Middle School in the eighties and mostly walked to and from school. In the near future, the increased price of gasoline might increase students walking to school, therefore increasing the importance of your decision for safe sidewalks. The sidewalk on Wayne Street might better serve the students if it was located on the south side of the street. The crosswalk needed to reach the school property could be located on the east side of Simmons. of Simmons. Crossing a street once instead of twice to arrive at a school would seem to be a safer way for students to go. The south sidewalk would disrupt three citizens' front yards instead of two citizens' side yards if it was located on the north side of Wayne. In my opinion, the safety of the children should be the primary concern. I would question also the idea of routing the students west on Leslie Street, as it could possibly encourage students to go on straight west across Ninth Street without the benefit of a crosswalk and into the parking area between Coaches and Papa Murphy's. At that point, it could seem logical to some of those students to continue on west, cutting across Broadway. I know that from experience, I had three children there. Even if students, even if the student's choice would be to walk north on Ninth using the current sidewalk where Leslie ends and negotiating five driveways at Craft Manor, I just, I just think that that's not a safe way for the kids to walk. If funds were available to provide a sidewalk on the east side of Simmons Street running north to Cloud from the school, students living north and, northwest and west could walk from the school property to Cloud and Ninth and use a pedestrian crosswalk that's already there. Last Monday, the upcoming Hagman and Broadway changes were mentioned with regard to the sidewalks for South Middle School. One of my concerns is the proposed sidewalk on the south side of Hagman Street, west of Broadway. On the city's plan, it appears to, to kind of be a dead end at Broadway. Again, I question if that will encourage students to cross Broadway without the benefit of a pedestrian crosswalk.
Additional public comment?
Mary Ann Adams, I live, I'm one of the, on the north side, it will affect our property. I am struggling with the fact that they are going to route kids south, those that are west of Ninth Street. I know our kids would not have walked that far out, the opposite direction of school and then crossed the walk and then walked back again. Those kids are all gonna find ways to get across there, and I just think it's a waste of money to spend it on the sidewalk there. They won't use it. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, well, good evening, Commissioners. Merlin Stevens, 340 Maple. Been here several times on this Hagman crosswalk, have talked to several people around here. I think we'd better table Wayne and Leslie until we get Broadway and Hagman corrected. If I heard Mr. Carl Place last week on the TV, he said the survey was for 127 kids in this area. They surveyed 30. Seven out of the 30 was walking to school. Now, where are the other 97 going to go? Good question. And right now, at this time, until that overpass is taken out, I don't think we're going to know for sure where they're coming. I live at 340 Maple, and if you don't know where that is, that's my backyard, it's Coaches Inn, or Coaches Corner, or whatever you want to call. I've lived there 40 years. My kids went to Hagman across the crosswalk, they went to South Junior, I had a gate in the back, they went across Ninth Street. Illegal? Yes, there wasn't the traffic there is nowadays. And then on across the Ninth to get to South Junior on Leslie. But they went across Ninth, they went across Broadway. If you would look and drive down them streets, you will see some, I used to call them on the farm cow paths, where people walk. There's some on the west side of Ninth Street going into Otto. They're coming across from Coaches Inn down through the parking lot. I have them on the backside of my yard, walking down the street. Some of them are in the street, some of them are in the ditch. Also, Mr. Carlton Place said that it wasn't feasible for them kids to go 600 feet northwest to Cloud Street and across, but it's okay for us. When they take it out, they're gonna, my understanding and my drawing is that I've got the latest, is we're going to put 600 feet of sidewalk in from Hagman to the north to Cloud Street. We're going to have to go across Cloud Street and then across Broadway to get to the east side. Now, I don't think us people are going to do any better than the kids are. I'll be honest with you. And I think that there is a better solution, and I'd like for you folks to reconsider this and leave Wayne and Leslie alone for a year, or however long it takes to see where these kids are actually going. Because we got Brown Mackey down there with all the cars parked around there that were having trouble, and we're putting more kids down there. And like I said, coming across Ninth Street and coming across Broadway, there's a bunch of traffic there, and if you do that on Leslie, you're going to put them out there, just like Della said. There's five openings in Brooks Liquor and along Craft Manor there. Used to be Al Alco's and everything, and now you've got Poppy John's and all of them places, Coaches Inn, and they're going to go across the street. You're not going to keep them. I go up to Otto Street, and kids ride their bicycles across there and go south on the sidewalk. They don't use the stoplight. I could tell you a lot more, but I think we need a really good survey on that. And at one time, I thought we was going to get another walk on the south side of Cloud Street, but I see that that didn't materialize. But I think that every year, there's going to be more kids or less kids in that area, and they're going to go somewhere. And where are they going to go? We talked safety. We also said that we needed it on Wayne Street on the north side because the snow is going to be on that way. If I recall, the City of Salina takes care of that park there, and they clean them sidewalks there. But that other, I believe, is owned by Harvey, and I think it's private land. I don't know who cleans it off. And I think being on the south side, we're talking about the maintenance, I understand that. I used to work at the VFW when you crews went down the street, about four or five times we cleaned off the sidewalk because the sidewalk was up against the curbs there on Crawford. It's a constant problem. But I think on that street over there, maybe you could turn your blade and go the other way with it, if possible. Thank you very much for listening, I hope you make a decision, but be sure that it's the right decision, and I remember what Commissioner Vanier said, and he's not here. This Broadway and Hagman is a disaster, and it still is going to be. Thank you.
Any additional public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
There's a lot of town, of our city that doesn't have sidewalks, and there's a lot that does, and it's always amusing to me to be out in the morning and see joggers jogging in the street when there's a sidewalk, and, and so it's, it's kind of a dilemma. Maybe Mrs. Adams is right, we shouldn't do anything.
Well.
But go ahead.
Well, along those same things, I was going to ask Mr. Place, when you did these neighborhood talks, it was just this year, just recently, or has this gone on? I'm trying to look at the dates here.
Just recently.
It wasn't like a year ago, and, or?
The original meeting that we had with the students was in the spring of this year.
Okay, so it was right before school let out?
That's correct. The last two neighborhood meetings that we have are, one was two weeks ago and one was last week.
Right.
Just specifically dealing with the property owners adjacent to this sidewalk.
Well, I'm inclined to agree with, with citizens that live in that area and see the traffic, that maybe we do need to wait to see what happens. I feel like we are kind of putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I think Commissioners, one thing you have to think about is with a school, you're going to see traffic from all directions. There's not going to be one single area that funnels all the students into the school. It's pretty clear from the discussions what the students, and it was a statistical sampling, so you can extrapolate it, how accurate it'll be, no one knows, but there are going to be more than roughly seven kids who walk that. And so this does serve a need. There's obviously a connection there, and it connects back to a lighted signal, pedestrian signal. Now, the real question, though, is, is what is the impact still north of the school? And I think that's distinctly separate from this, because again, not all the kids are going to come from the same area and walk the same path. So when I look at this, I, whether this sidewalk is on the north or south side of Wayne, from the, from the pedestrian crossing, issue's probably somewhat irrelevant, it's just which, which location makes it most palatable to the neighborhood, in my mind. Certainly, you need to connect up to South Middle School, that makes sense to do that. But this takes care of some of the students who are going to come from that area, and then you're going to have, you may have students that come from the north, and it looks like we may need to continue to look at the north traffic patterns and see if we need to do some sidewalk work up there as well.
My thought, for what it's worth, is since I grew up in that neighborhood, I don't see the need for the one on Wayne Avenue. I think the real issue, people living on that block don't want a sidewalk on their side of the street. I'm not sure we need one at all, we're talking about middle school kids and not second graders, and I would support the rest of the project and cut that one out.
If I can interject here, I will say that the study was brought about by the effect that it has on the, the specific students west of Broadway and south of Cloud. It was our feeling that if we are directing these, we went away from the original concept, which was directing them to the north and to the west, which is directly opposite of the path they want to travel in order to get to South Middle School. That's what brought this, that was the original thing that brought this up. Students are not going to use that. So we, we really looked into that, and the reason the sidewalks along Wayne and Simmons were added was we really felt that we can't direct students to walk a certain path to get to school, give them a safe crossing at Otto and Ninth, get them across to Wayne Avenue and say, finish your travel in the street. We've had a lot of comment from neighbors in that area that said, in the morning, this is a very heavily traveled area. You know, so based on the amount of students that we have, it's, it's not significant, I mean, there were seven out of the 30, not seven total out of the 120, but seven out of the 30. So we're looking at, you know, somewhere 28 to 30, if you, if you round that up. What they end up doing is something that we can't really force them to do, but that was the purpose of the meeting that we had at the middle school in the spring, was to, we literally asked the kids, here's a map, what route would you take in order to get to the school? A crossing anywhere along Broadway between Cloud and Ninth is just not a safe crossing. We really looked into several options as far as putting in a pedestrian, another signal on Broadway to, to add in a pedestrian crossing. A big issue with that is once we go ahead and get them across Broadway at that location, we're putting them on, we don't have a place to really direct them from there. Not only is it not the most safe thing to do, to put that pedestrian crossing right there, but we don't have anywhere to put them once we get them across the street. This location at Otto really is what was determined to be the best location. Again, there at Wayne and, Wayne and Simmons, you know, the biggest discussion came up, the north side or south side of Wayne. We felt originally that the, the south side was the best, because you did only have one street crossing. But then the issue really came up is, are, you know, where are the students actually going to go? With, with the location of where that ramp is now and where the students, where they cross right now, it made sense to go ahead and make that on the north side. We, we don't like back-of-curb sidewalks, we wanted to put it just inside the property line, but then with that, we're getting within about 11 feet of the side of the one house, and well, we didn't want that either. So we decided that the, the best fit was to put it at the back of the curb, make it a five-foot sidewalk and go from there. I can address a lot of the other concerns if you, if you want me to, or feel free to ask any questions you might have.
It should also be noted that students that attend Stewart School also live west of Ninth Street, and that is their route for getting to Stewart School.
They take Wayne all the way across, is that what you're saying?
Well, the designated safe route to get to Stewart School is at that same Otto crossing, and there are students in that neighborhood that attend and are in the Stewart enrollment area.
Mm-hmm.
Where does the Stewart enrollment area go to?
It includes Maple and Yale and those streets over there.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't go to Shilling, they go to Stewart?
They go to Stewart.
Is there a sidewalk on the south end of the South Middle School property?
Not yet.
There's not currently, but in talks with, with Ken Kennedy, when funds are available, he would, he would like to encircle the entire school with a sidewalk. That was another reason why it made sense to go ahead and put the sidewalk on the north side of Wayne, just so that you didn't have to walk and then cross, you could just keep going as, as long as you went down Wayne.
Well, yeah, the back-of-curb thing on the, on the north side of Wayne, I see there's a lot of established landscaping there. If you'd gone right up to the property lines, you would really be ripping out the landscaping. I don't know how much landscaping's going to get hit now, but it looks like maybe some, which is unfortunate. But as far as trying to get kids to stay on the sidewalk instead of a street, that looks like the better choice because it looks shorter and would be technically shorter than, than trying to go to the south side of the street. I can't see kids bothering to go to the south side of the street. So I would go with either not doing a strip, I mean, it looks silly to have sidewalks and have them not connect anything, but you have that up on, on Leslie, I noticed there's about a half a block of sidewalk and just ends. The whole neighborhood's grossly underserved if pedestrianism ever comes into, into style. So.
And it may.
So this is, I'm looking at this as a start for putting together a pedestrian leak, and someday if we have $10 gallon gasoline, maybe people will be more interested in walking.
I just need to ask a quick question. Mrs. Adams, are you on the corner of Simmons and Wayne? Is that your house on the corner? Okay. I know you gave the address of Simmons, but I wasn't sure if you were on the corner or the next one. Are you opposed to the sidewalk on your property, or there on the side?
I just.
You feel like they've always crossed through there, so what's?
They're used to that, you know, there's not going to be retraining. And then.
Might have you come back to the microphone here.
Do you want to come up to the microphone so everyone can hear you?
I do think down the road, maybe that's okay, but right now, I feel like, here we've got this one-block sidewalk, those going to Stewart will have a hole from ours, let's see, Simmons to Fourth Street, which is a really long block, they don't have any sidewalks at all.
Right.
So that's defeating that purpose, I think.
Well, it's a start that way, too, is the other way to look at it.
But I do think you should give it a year to see where those students are going to walk that are coming from the west. Because I, I had four kids, I know how they walk.
Is there sidewalks past Fourth Street on Wayne?
Yes.
Yes, on the north side.
But going all the way to. But going all the way to Stewart, sometimes on, they're on the south side and sometimes they're on the north side, so these kids, if they're going to stay on the sidewalk, they're crossing back and forth all the way to Stewart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Commission action?
I'm going to offer amendment that we delete the Wayne Avenue part of the project from the project.
I'm inclined to agree.
Offering motion, I guess.
That would be a change order simultaneously at the issue of the new contract.
Carlton, it wouldn't, since it's not been awarded yet, it wouldn't be a change order. It would just be a modification to the contract, wouldn't it? Yeah.
So the mayor would like someone to make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve the 2007 Arterial Street Sidewalk Improvements Project Number Zero Seven Dash Sixteen Twenty Four with the deletion of this one block of paving on the north side of Wayne. And that's the motion, and I assume that we'll consider that in next year's sidewalk program.
Commissioner, would that, would that include, though, the, the link on the east side of Simmons?
Yeah, go ahead and build a round, start building around the school.
I'll sec, excuse me.
No, I'm not going to second it. I mean, go ahead.
Well, I thought you had a comment.
Well, yeah, I guess if I vote against that, I'm voting in favor of keeping, I mean, there's not two separate motions here, is there?
Well, that motion hasn't been seconded, so we can start over. Is there, is there a second for the motion?
Abner's motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion of the motion? Questions about it? Well, I think we have to start somewhere on a, on a safe pathways to school program, and this seems to be part of one, and whether, and there is that, that big discussion about where will kids actually walk when you build one, so, and if it's, this is so debatable about where they're actually going to go, but ultimately, it sure would be good to have a complete loop around the school, so that's why I'm in favor of, of having the,
Starting on the east side.
Going ahead and doing the Simmons portion of it and study the thing through this school year, and then maybe come back in the future.
Imagine these types of things are reviewed annually and.
Well, they can be, Commissioners. You have to remember, though, that we have a lot of schools and a lot of different sidewalks and a lot of missed linkages here, and part of the idea of connectivity is trying to fill those in as you can. And, you know, some people say, well, in some of these cases, why would you put a sidewalk that leads to nowhere? But if we think twenty years ago and we put more sidewalks that led to nowhere, they'd lead to somewhere today.
Right.
So that's part of what we're really trying to do is fill, and this is a real short linkage that gets you to the school. One could argue whether you even need a sidewalk around the school if they can walk on the property and, and there's no sidewalk leading up to it. Once they get to the property, they're there. It's maybe a grass maintenance issue or something for the school, but it's probably not a big issue. And the idea of this is, again, to look at the southwest part of the school. Certainly, I think we need to continue to look up in the northwest, too. I think the comments provided are very relevant and to those paths and to seeing how we can accommodate that, if we can safely, but this is just one single link that addresses one part of the situation. It's not a, doesn't solve the whole issue for the whole school.
Okay, Jason talked me into it. I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I think, you know, if there's ever a future, a future in, in going around the whole perimeter of the school, it just makes sense that this is, it makes sense, first of all, to have this, as awkward as it is, on the north side of Wayne, to me, anyway. But, I mean, even though that's just a little strip, that seems to be a pretty important piece of the, the whole puzzle for a future connectivity, I suppose.
Point of order, can, is it? Commissioner, to withdraw a motion that's been seconded?
If the second concurs, I believe that would be appropriate.
I'll, I'll second that. Did he withdraw? Did you withdraw the motion? Okay, I'll second that.
Withdraw the second.
Withdraw, yes.
Echoy, she washy. Okay, so now I'll make a motion to approve that contract as proposed.
Second. Motion is to approve the, or the contract for the 2007 Arterial Street Sidewalk Improvements Project Number Zero Seven Dash One Six Two Four. And a comment before we vote, I don't think the Wayne section is necessary, but I don't want to vote against the whole project just because of that. So, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. I'm not aware of any other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor to adjourn signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned.